We have no audio on Zoom.
Can you hear?
There we go, that's better. No.
Good morning, Margaret. Good morning, Margaret.
Good morning.
You good? All right. All right, good morning. Welcome to the April eighteenth meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and Supervisor Carpenter Harris will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There you go.
On, ready to begin. Reporting out on the April fourth closed session. That was Government Code, Section five four nine, five four point five E, Public Employee Evaluation, County Council, and that process continued. Presentations, Board of Supervisors, item one point one. Receive a presentation from County Council Margaret Long describing the scope of professional legal services contractually provided to Trinity County by Prentice Long, PC, no fiscal impact. Margaret?
Okay, wonderful. And I will help you out.
Thank you. So thank you for this opportunity to go through. It's a good idea to go through kind of what I call the year on review, just to understand exactly what services have been provided and what type of work we've seen this year. I think it helps not only to kind of see what, what the focus of County Council's office should be, but what the focus of the county has been over the years since our department has the unique advantage of being able to work with every department within the county. With a few exceptions, we don't work that much with the District Attorney's Office, but all the other departments we work with pretty regularly. So I wanted to kind of introduce you to the staff that has been working on the project. So you've seen a lot of these names, but I thought I'd put the faces with the names so that when you, you hear that somebody from Prentice Long is contacting you, asking you for something or wanting to work on a project, you know who they are. We are, our firm has ten attorneys currently, and we currently have seven attorneys assigned to work in Trinity County. We, we provide the services of three to four full-time county councils utilizing these services. But what we have the advantage of is because we have ten different attorneys, eleven actually, different attorneys who have specialties, we can provide those specialties as well. I know a lot of you know Amanda, she is the assistant and comes and covers meetings. She's also our litigation guru and takes a lot of the brunt of litigation off my plate and has done fantastic job with that. Sean Cameron's the other one you hear a lot of and see a lot of. He is, does our contract review and reviews every, every contract that becomes before the board. He's read the entire thing. Sometimes it can be thousands and thousands of pages and he has to sit there and read through all of them. He also is, specializes in land use and planning, does a lot of work with the planning department. He's been on many, many a call, many ad hoc meeting, many a meeting with them and many a planning commission as well. We also have an attorney that's signed solely to Public Records Act. You would think that that is not a big responsibility, but actually it's about a halftime attorney right now for Trinity County with public records, and we'll go through why in a second. So we have assigned an attorney in Chelmsford, who's been with the county for seven years, and she has taken on the role kind of of, of leading the Public Records Act and does that pretty much as, as her entire job. Then Kelsey Walsh came in and has done code enforcement, so she works very closely with our code enforcement department and has a great relationship with those individuals over the Sheriff's Department. The point where when she, she just went off on maternity leave, there were some of the first texts she got in the hospital asking how, how the baby was. She works very closely with them, you know, out, out in the field, in the courtroom, with the citations, with the notices. And she also takes up the public guardian responsibility, which when she was on maternity leave, I had the pleasure of filling in for her. And I can tell you, the folks in the public guardian department are some of the best you'll ever meet. They are just dedicated to what they do, and it was a pleasure to be able to assist how I could and appear on their behalf in the court. Scott is McLaren, he is our, one of our more experienced folks. He comes from a CPS background, he was a CPS social worker before he became the Assistant County Council in Nevada County. And for the past three years, he's been with us. He helps out with litigation, he also does all our CPS appeals. You'll never hear about those because I think since we've been here, we've never, we've been successful in all of them. And so they, they, they come anytime somebody doesn't like a result in the CPS court, they can take it up through the appeal process, and he and I work very closely on those. And then Carolyn Walker, she is very involved in our receivership program. And she kind of takes some of the lead on that in terms of coordinating with receivers, getting the paperwork filed, having the court appearances. She also has a background in labor negotiations and HR. And as we get HR director in place, she will be coordinating with them and working with them to do that. We also have a paralegal who is very involved, Kim Pike. And then we also have three support staff. Probably, I would say about one and a half of their time collectively is devoted to Trinity County. So we're about four attorneys and one and a half staff members devoted to the county on a full-time basis. Next. So what I want to just briefly go through is that there are some statutory requirements of County Council's office. And I want to kind of go through those and show you how we play those out in terms of the services we provide. And the first one is kind of the what everybody thinks is the totality of our job, which is attend board meetings. I actually calculated the time and it's about three percent of our time is attending board meetings. That's a very little of what we do, but it is very important, and so we're happy to be here and do so. In preparation for attending the board meetings, next slide, we do have to look at and stay abreast on all of the laws that relate to county government. And I've got about two pages of laws that we research and study on a pretty much daily basis to make sure that we're up to speed, and you know, the Brown Act, ethics. But we also have a lot of work that we have to do related to voting and elections, especially recently. Those have been very hot topics and subject to a lot of litigation that we've had to stay apprised of. Finances, First Amendment. We do do a lot of work on looking at land use incorporation, those types of things, working with our special districts as well. One of the things that is required by laws that the county council is available as a resource and asset to all special districts within the community. And so we do have to be available for those as well. We do get frequent calls from our special jurisdiction and community asking questions. And we also are overseeing risk management and insurance-related items as they relate to a legal perspective. So we're on every phone call related to claims, every phone call related to liability. And we are, I'll have the say in terms of whether items settle or whether they don't, or whether, we don't have the same issue when they settle, but whether they, whether they have enough claim to bring it forward, meaning whether they're late, they're untimely, they're inappropriate, they're the wrong jurisdiction. Then ultimately, the board gets the decision on how to handle those, but we set up the package to move forward on those. Next slide. We also have to be very apprised of land use zoning and planning. Obviously, there's, every once in a while, we get a new hot topic within those, cannabis being one for the past couple of years. And that's taken hundreds and hundreds of hours of time, staying apprised of what's going on in those and following both the state legislation, what's going on in our neighboring counties. We have folks that are specialized in, as I said, labor and employment law. That is one of my specialties, so I do spend a lot of time working on those areas within the county. You can just see them, I don't need to go through all of them, but they're, these are just kind of a start of what we, we look at on a daily basis to make sure that we're prepared. When we come into these meetings with all the information. We also, of course, study our municipal code, which is very antiquated at times, but we have to try to interpret it and make sure that we are in compliance with all that going forward. New paragraph. The other part, which probably takes up a little more of our time, is that we have an obligation to advise the county officers. So county officers include all your department heads, but it also includes a lot of your program managers and supervisors. Next page. So what I did is kind of broke down in two thousand twenty-two, which is kind of the year we're doing a summary of, of how much time we spent just individually talking to department head supervisors and managers. So that's kind of the total hours per month. And I thought it was really interesting to look at that, how many different departments that we talked, we talked to or gave legal advice to on those each ones. You can see it kind of on the low end, it's sixteen, on the high end, it's twenty-two. And I know you're thinking, wait, we don't have twenty-two departments, but you do have twenty-two subclasses department. You know, for example, planning has environmental health. The HHS has, you know, eligibility and it has CPS and has all these different outlets. So we kind of classified which different individuals we spoke to in each month. And as you can see, we, we average about one hundred and eighty hours a month, just in, just in direct service to each of these department heads and managers and supervisors to provide them legal advice. I also thought it would be interesting just to see how many emails I get a day, and I get texts sometimes too, since modern times. I get seventy-nine, personally, I get seventy-nine requests for legal advice every day, on average, from your department heads and your supervisors. Some of them are just asking legal questions that I can answer, we're on the spot, some are asking for full legal research and memos. And so we provide the whole scope bit, but it's seventy-nine individual topics that I got. I get on average, when I looked at the, kind of my, my, my focus, of course, they have follow-ups and, and so on. But I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of how much we've got coming in and out of our department. Next slide. We also have, because we have the unique ability that we work with every department, when there are vacancies in departments or there's loss of staff, high-level staff, we have, we have the ability and have filled in. In two thousand twenty-two, we filled in when two departments, when they were down staff members, first one being cannabis and planning. And these are just kind of the hours we added on just for the focus on that while they were without department head. And you know, as of course, a department head comes in, we taper off and kind of move to the next area that we need to assist in. But since I've been here in the county for about ten years, we have kind of filled in, in, I would say, six different departments while they were without a department head, just to make sure the county continues to function. Next. Next slide. You're doing great. Thank you. I also, yeah, I'm going pretty fast because I didn't, I don't want to waste everyone's time today, but I think it's really good information to have. So personnel is being the other area that we really focused on in the patent twenty-two without, with the retirement of our Personnel Director. And also, that department is, has a lot on their plate. And it, it always requires a little bit of assistance, I kind of put in the bottom. Even prior to the retirement of the director, we had scheduled office hours in personnel every Thursday all afternoon to meet with the director and go over any issues they have. We'll continue that up if, when the new director comes in. But without the director, we've kind of gone to twenty-four seven monitoring, so we haven't, we haven't done that, but we've kind of stepped it up a little bit. And we've taken on a lot of the responsibilities of the Personnel Director in the absence. But typically, any, any issue coming through personnel does also have a legal component to it. That's one of your highest risks areas when you're dealing with employees. And that's what typically you end up in litigation over, which we've been very successful at avoiding since, since I've been here. I've been with the county about ten years. But we, every time there's a question regarding hiring, we focus on background checks. We make sure we review all the paperwork that comes back from the DOJ to make sure it's accurate, make sure we can move forward. We are involved in every element of discipline from when the person does something over the weekend and we get the phone call on a Saturday morning that something's happened, up until the final discipline being imposed. We have to be experts on POBAR, which is the Police Officers' Bill of Rights. We're very closely with the Sheriff's Department, if anything were to happen in his department, to make sure that all of the rights of the, our law enforcement are upheld. We do represent the county in any arbitrations that we go through in any purb hearing. That's the Labor, Labor Board for the State of California, we represent them in that. We actually draft, we have been drafting and assisting and drafting. We used to assist, now we've been doing it, drafting job descriptions as they get modified and updated. So we have department heads saying, hey, we need some changes to our departments. And so we have had the pleasure of working with them to update those. We also take on and have taken on the project of rewriting all the personnel policies. That was a project we started about seven years ago, and we've touched every single one of them at this point, working very closely with the department heads that they affect. You know, a lot of the department heads were very involved in that. For example, our IT policies, Michael Singleton was very involved in that and appreciated all his work in getting those updated. And of course, as we've finished the project, the project needs to start again. The laws regarding personnel change on a daily basis, and so we constantly have to look that up. And during COVID, of course, everything was up in the air, and we were working very closely with all the departments, public health and personnel to update all our COVID policies and make sure they were compliant with law. Anything we do that relates to employees has to be done with and meet in for with the union. So we have the responsibility, the primary responsibility to have that meet and confer with the union. I have frequent telephone calls with the union reps, emails, meetings, to make sure that they're aware of what's going on within the county and that we're aware of any concerns their employees have. We've also taken up, since without a, without an HR director, we've taken up the last three, which are primary HR responsibilities, but those are fit for duties. So if an employee is having a medical issue, we have been coordinating them, getting tested to see what the extent is, and then using that information to help accommodate them in their job. We've also been taking the lead on all investigations, which at any given time in the county, there's probably between three and six investigations going on, which we're overseeing, talking with the investigators, setting up the meetings, setting up the notices, making sure everybody is where they need to be. And the last one is IAP, which we've taken on, which is interactive process. So when somebody comes back and has a disability or something that needs to be accommodated, we set up a pretty detailed meeting with them where we go through their job description. We work with their boss to make sure that those can, you know, whatever their conditions is can be accommodated. And we put together a pretty extensive plan on how we will accommodate them and get them back to work. Yes?
Can I just ask? The, some of the stuff that you're describing right now, is that always things that would normally fall to a legal department? Or is it because of our current HR staffing situation?
Good question. Every item up there is normally overseen by County Council. The last three typically is not done by County Council, it's just overseen by it. In the absence of personnel, we've been doing the fit-for-duties investigations and IAPs. But we're still involved in those at, at every element of it. It's just now I'm actually the one sitting in the meeting saying, you know, what are your, what can, what can you do? What your boss, you know, actually coordinating that and writing up the report after it.
Thank you.
Next slide. So the other thing we do is again, we, we have an obligation under the government code to review every piece of paper essentially that comes through the county. And so we do review every contract lease memorandum. We create all the legal documents or review them if they're created. We review every board agenda item and any other document that comes forward. Next slide. Again, it's part of our responsibility is to prepare everything. We're happy to do so, and we do when we're asked, and we typically prepare, I would say ninety percent of the resolutions, ordinances and orders that come through the county. If we haven't prepared them, it's because they're typically ones that you see every year, and we prepared them a couple of years ago. But we do look at that. We've also created standardized contracts that kind of to create some ease for the county. We update those regularly, and so you'll see different drafts to them as the new changes and then the new provisions come into place or new, new laws come into place, we update those. But a lot of the contracts we see don't have the ability to be in a standard contract, especially if they're through the federal or state government, who will not use anything but their own. So we review all of those. And again, we, we prepare written documentation or written opinions on anything that is requested by anyone who is considered an officer of the county. So that would include board and department heads. Next slide. We also have the job doing Public Records Act. Public Record Act is, is the production of any paper, any document that is in the county's possession. We handle these, again, we have an individual who handles these exclusively. In two thousand twenty-two, we handled one hundred and forty-seven. And the average time it takes to do a Public Records Act is between two and forty-two hours. We do get, point being is they, they're never short, they always require work, but sometimes they can take an extensive amount of work. We've had to, in the past, bring in staff to help with redactions. Because typically, we get the, the request, we work with the department head to get the documents, and then we have to look through the documents to see if they are compliant with the law. Meaning, we can't give out certain character, certain information such as social security numbers, personal information that could be identifying criminal cases that are currently pending, attorney-client privilege. There's certain things we have to redact from it, so we go through that. We also can't create the documents, so we just have to sometimes compile what we have into a written form. And we always accompany our responses with a formal letter that kind of explains exactly what they have in front of them. We have to do this all within ten days.
Margaret, is there any time between when I ask for public records and legally when you have to present them back to me?
Yes, so it's a ten-day response time. We are allowed to get an extension up to fourteen days where, so there's a lot of times when we physically cannot gather it in that period of time, so we utilize that fourteen-day extension period. There are also times when somebody asks, and we have received, you know, every document from nineteen twenty-three to today. I mean, we get, and we get those broad requests. So sometimes we do send back requests for clarification. And sometimes we do get document requests that are so large that we do have to request an additional time over the twenty-four days. We try not to do that, and it's pretty rare that we do that in the hundred and forty-seven. We, I, two or three maybe we did that with. But you know, sometimes again, it is, it's can be very time-consuming. And of course, we can't charge for it, so all one hundred and forty-seven are born, the cost is borne by the county. Next slide. Again, as I said, we also review every contract, every line of every contract that comes before. In two thousand twenty-two, we reviewed three hundred and eight contracts. And this involves, this includes reviewing, but it also includes amending and correcting. So we do send them back with additional or language that is compliant with law if it's not correct. It also involves negotiating if there's an issue that comes into place between a department and a contractor regarding what the terms of the contract, and we'll step in and actually engage in that negotiations with them to make sure that the contract can move forward and we can support our departments that way. Next, next slide. We also are the labor negotiators for the county. Currently, oops, last year, we were not in, not in active labor negotiations, and we still spent fifty-three hours working on it, but as you can see, we have five bargaining units. Each of them have the right to have an MOU, and each of them have the right to negotiate their MOU, and we're pleased to be able to sit at the table with them and provide that information that they're requesting to the board. It also involves, again, writing up the contracts, negotiating the terms and conditions of them and presenting them to the board, and then again, presenting them to the, the union. Next slide. And we also have an obligation under Government Code two six five two nine to defend or prosecute all civil actions against the county, so this is litigation. We have an obligation to defend them, we can't not respond to it. And so we have to look at every claim for damage that comes in, as we talked about earlier. We work very closely with Trindell on those. Last year, there was twelve cases through Trindell. When they go through Trindell, they get assigned to councils through Trindell, but we are still actively involved in it. We have, get, we get monthly reports, we talk directly with the attorneys, probably monthly as well. We attend all the mediations, we attend the trials if they were to go to trial, and we are the liaison between the outside council and the county. And so we had twelve last year. We also have cases that are not covered under Trindell, which means they're not liability cases. Last year, we had two that went to outside councils, so looking for specialists in a specific area. The ones we handled in-house are all over the board. I think the ones we hear about are cannabis, but we handle a lot of election cases, a lot of assessor cases, property cases. Typically, they come in, they come in and we are able to handle them pretty quickly. But they're, they, unfortunately, they, they come in, and then we have some national litigations, opioid litigation being one of them. And we have, we've had some fire litigation as well. So we, we typically oversee those even though they are being handled on a, on a national level.
Margaret, one question. Can we go back one slide?
Sure.
So you had one more slide. Fifty-three point one hours in a off-year. What would be that number in a negotiation year?
Three hundred to four hundred hours.
How many?
Three hundred to four hundred.
So six X that?
Yes. Yes, if all five units are negotiating, I typically, it's typically about seventy-five to a hundred hours to get a contract. Now, we can get lucky, but usually you only get lucky when you have really prosperous years, when you're, you're dealing with years that have budget issues. It's usually seventy-five to a hundred hours per unit.
Thank you.
We also have the privilege of working with the code enforcement department, who is wonderful to work with, as I said before, and has, has really figured a good system to work with our office, and we're really grateful for them to doing that. Last year, or sorry, two thousand twenty-two, one hundred and seventy parcels were cited. We, in the past, had had a very low rate of self-abatement, but because of the efforts of the code enforcement department, we are getting a lot of self-abatement, meaning within the grace period, they're coming back and actually eradicating on their own without costing us any additional money. Last, in two thousand twenty-two, we had a hundred and fifty of our parcels do that, which is from a code enforcement's perspective, about as good as you can get. We had several of them abate after the time limit, which means we have to go after them for fines and fees, but we don't have to go through a court process, and then we had to go through twelve to get a court process, all of which we were successful on. The process is, even when they self-abate, involves my office heavily. We receive the citation, we still issue notices. We, so we issue notices of what's going on, we issue notices of court date, we file all paperwork if we do have to go to court. We also issue all the liens on the property, and then we do the release of liens, and we work with the real estate agencies when the property is being sold to see where the status of the lien is. So this has typically been an almost full-time job of one of the attorneys the past year or two because of all the self-abatement, and we're really happy to report that it's about halftime to get, to kind of work with this department and get it done, because they've done such a fantastic job of, of being consistent. Next slide. The other part we deal with is we're obligated to work with probate, conservatorship, guardianship and juvenile dependency. And this is one of my favorite parts of the job because of the dedication to people in those departments. But we are obligated to provide those services. Let's kind of quickly go through those services. Thanks, Ashley. Okay, so dependency, so this is when an individual child is in a home that is not suitable, and we are an obligation to work with the department to help get them removed, help try to work with the parents to rehabilitate them and to help reunite the families back together, and if not, find a stable and suitable home for the children. In two thousand twenty-two, we had twenty-eight families that we're working with. Some of these families have upwards of six children, so it's not, it's a lot of children we're dealing with. We are very involved from the day they are detained, meaning the day they are discovered in the conditions or in whatever the circumstances are in, making the determination of what level, what, what claims we can make against them to get them through the court, all the way through the court process, which is usually between one and two years. It typically has four, four hearings right up front where we detain, where we figure out if we have the right to detain and whether we make a determination of what the appropriate placements are. if we have the right to detain and whether we make a determination of what the appropriate placements are, looking at and looking at what the plan is for reunification to get the families back together. In all reality, it typically has about eight to ten hearings to get this done because there's a lot of moving parts, dealing with a lot of different attorneys, also dealing with a lot of different and unique situations. Again, the goal of these social workers is to help every way they can to help these families. And so we do do a lot of work together to strategize about mechanisms to help. And it is actually, it's amazing to watch them work and come up with strategies and it's wonderful to be part of the team, but it does take, does take quite a bit of time to do that. So just kind of putting through our hours each month. So you can see how much time we're devoting to that. Separate and part of all the other times we've discussed. Next one. The other one is the public guardian. This is for individuals who are unable to care for themselves, providing them an opportunity to be conserved, meaning allowing the public guardian to take over in making sure they have their food, clothing and shelter and other basic necessities met. As I said, these are just like the social workers from CPS, you have some of the best social workers in the universe who go above and beyond for these families. We assist throughout the entire process, making sure what they're doing is legal, making sure that we, you know, strategize about the best mechanism to do it. And then we do the court appearances on them as well. And there's quite a lot of court appearances. In two thousand and twenty-two, we spent almost three hundred hours to two hundred and eighty-seven hours and we had twenty-five individuals who entered the program that year. Now, when they enter, unlike with CPS, a lot of the times they stay until they pass away because again, typically these individuals have a grave to say a disability that does not cure itself. And so we're we're there because they have no family to take care of them and we help them. We help them with their their needs. Next one. And the last one, she's kind of talking about some of the interesting things we do is the public administrator. We are not, county council is not obligated for the public administrator. That is a job of the district attorney's office. Back about four years ago. And continuing today, the district attorney has not been able to staff high enough individuals to actually take on this responsibility. And so we have volunteered to assist. We we don't get compensated for it, but we volunteered to assist in it just while the the staffing levels rise. As you probably know, right now, there's a huge huge staffing shortage for or shortage of attorneys in the state of California. And we are struggling everywhere in the state of struggling to get enough attorneys to do the basic functions. And because this one is so important, we've just volunteered to step in and kind of take care of it. I can see the pictures of two of my staff members who actually had to go and inventory a home of someone who passed away. And that that was a hazmat situation and they had to inventory it to let the court know exactly what was in it. It was, it was not a conditions I'd ever want anyone to live in, but they, of course, being the great, greatest staff in the world, jumped right in, put on the hazmat suits and jumped into inventory it. But what happens if you pass away in Trinity County, you don't have any heirs. We we have to step in and inventory your state, go through the probate process and make a determination of how to handle your estate. As I said, we're just we're volunteering. We've been trying to pass it back for a couple of years. It hasn't worked. But this week we're putting a house up for sale through the public administrator to try to follow and make sure we follow all the court orders. Next one. So I I could go on for hours of what our obligations are and what we do, but you know, I just wanted to put some additional kind of things that we are responsible for and we step in and handle. This is not the entirety. This is just a portion of it. We work very closely again with the treasurer and the tax collector relating to anything related to the funds in county. We are responsible for fifty-one fifty voluntary holds. Also, if individuals are confined in our jail and determined that they don't believe they were improperly confined or improperly confined in conditions, they can file a writ hearing and we respond to those and participate in them. We are very involved in elections. So anytime election season comes on, you'll see us frantically writing impartial analysis, is making sure that everything's being done in a constitutional manner. That's our obligation. The law is that we have to step in and make sure all elections are being done constitutionally. And so if anyone submits a ballot measure that doesn't meet that, we step in and have to file with courts. But again, it could go on and on and on. I just wanted to give you kind of an overview and touch on the topics that in two thousand and twenty-two that we handled. But again, the great job thing about this job is that any given day it will be different. The great thing about the group of folks I work with is that they try to make sure they're prepared for it. It would be impossible to do this alone because there's so much and so much, so much time and so much unique elements to it. But I have a really good group that is stepping in and comes in. And anything that needs to be researched or learned or attended. And again, as I said, we stepped in to fill in for public guardian. I had two staff members go to a public administrator, public administration, two of them go to a public administrator training just to make sure they had enough skills to build and provide those services. And so they are now certified in public administration, just because they wanted to make sure they could serve. So it takes a, it takes a big village to to work with this county, but it's been an absolute pleasure. So any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. Questions?
Yeah, well, first, thank you very much. That was very helpful. One of your slides, when you're talking about dependency, it said CFS, was that?
Children and family services. I call it CPS because of old school and I've been doing this for twenty years. Oh, they call it CWS, but the state calls it different things. Everyone calls it different things. It's, it's, I'm trying to be, I was trying to be cool and hip and try to figure out what they call it now, but I call it CPS.
And what is the W then?
Child welfare. Was was used to be children and family service and now it's children and well, okay. It's CPS. So we call it dependency too, which is when children have to be removed from their home.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Counsel, thank you. Appreciate that. Your time and effort in preparing is is appreciated. Thank you. Right. All right. Item one point two, receive a presentation on the downtown flower basket project. And with us today, we have Rini Ryan, who has reinstated the garden club. And so she's going to give us a little bit of information about that as well as a very special project that she and her team are instigating. So Rini, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. So my husband and I travel a lot and in a lot of the places that we go, we always see these beautiful flower hanging baskets in all these wonderful communities. And we've always thought, how come we can't do that here in Trinity County and downtown? We were built to spruce things up and make it a little more appealing for not only us that live here, but travelers coming through. So with that, I decided to start going and trying to figure out how we could get this flower basket project going. And I also figured I needed help. So with that, I spoke with one of my girlfriends and we reenacted the garden club, which has been defunct for a couple of years because the ladies that had the garden club, they had all kind of aged out. So we're trying to bring back maybe a younger generation. But a lot of the older women have also joined us, so it's been actually very fun. We've had a couple of meetings and it's, it's moving along really well. You'll, you probably will start seeing a lot of beautification in downtown Weaverville and throughout the other areas where we're going to projects that we want to try to do. So anyways, but the hanging flower baskets. You can go to the next slide. That's kind of what we imagine that they'll look like, except they will be parallel to the highway. So that was just a picture that I had put together so people could kind of envision what we envision. So the project will be, there is nineteen, the baskets will be hung on the light poles, the green light poles that are downtown. There is actually twenty of them. There is ten on the right-hand side and nine on the left-hand side. And the best, how it would work was people will sponsor the basket. So the community would buy a basket either for a business, for a family in memory of a loved one. So there's really will be no cost associated. It will, the cost will go for the family that's sponsoring the basket or the person, individual or business. So my objective was just to get the baskets to, for the community, for visitors. You know, for to make our a better place where we live, working for people to visit. My resources and whatnot, I had been working with PUD and the CED in Reading to get the hooks made that are specifically made to go with those poles that we have downtown. The cost of them are very, very expensive. They're like four hundred and thirteen dollars per hook. And in a, in a couple of slides, you'll see my map that I've drawn to show you which poles will have double hooks and which ones will be single. So we are talking about like thirty hooks. So the cost of that that I got quoted was over thirteen thousand dollars. Well, I personally and my husband wouldn't help me pay for that, so I had to go out and I'm asking people for donations. Trinity River Lumber was so generous to donate two thousand dollars for the hooks. So I'm starting to collect some money to help pay for those. For an update on those, I am now working with Tyler, a young man who has a fabrication shop here in Weaverville that is going to make the hooks for much less half the cost probably. So he's working and he will make the same hooks. Probably you go maybe one more slide. These, this is what they'll look like. Basically, these are the ones that were going to be the thirteen thousand dollars. So he can make pretty much the same thing. We have changed some things. The the hooks won't go out thirty inches. We're only going to do about twenty-four inches. PUD requested that no matter what, we get the clamp on style, so nothing will be drilled into the poles. So they'll, that way, you know, if they needed to come down, they could easily go and unscrew them and remove them. So. I think you can go. Yep. So the flower baskets will be, that's potentially next year what they will be like, and they'll be anywhere from eighteen to twenty-one inches. This year, I've been working closely with Naomi from Trinity Nursery, who's been a huge supporter and huge help in all of this. And we did get baskets and they're a little bit smaller and the flowers aren't going to be the petunias. Due to the fact that we were so late in trying to get all this ordered and most of the cities order prior to, so we'll start selling the baskets again next year in January. So we'll know we can get in on the petunias. So that's our hope for that. So here's our map and you can see, it's kind of not really big enough, but which where all the light poles are and which ones will be single and which ones will be double. So there will be potentially thirty-two flower baskets is what we'll end up having downtown. This year, we only ordered thirty because we weren't sure how well it was going to go, how, you know, how is people going to perceive it? I've already sold seventeen baskets. And people have already started to fill out a form and they're starting to pay for them. So, so we have thirty baskets coming. So there will be thirty baskets downtown, hopefully. This is what the sponsorship, the signage samples. So onto the pole, these will be the signs and they will be zip tied onto the pole. So people will be able to see who is sponsored that basket, that particular basket. And there won't be any rhyme of reason. I know I had presented at the Rotary and somebody had asked about, well, if you have a business uptown, will that flower basket be uptown? Maybe, maybe not, because we really want people, if somebody's walking through town, to see maybe that business sponsored them and it might be uptown. So we want to kind of mix it up. The paper that that will be, that the signs will be put on, it's something called styrene. So it's a plastic that is able to withstand the weather. So they should last all through the summer. Potentially, our project will go for June, July and August of every year. This year, we're targeting a June fifteenth date if we can get everything, hopefully everything in place. The hooks should be done by the first of June. I'm working with PUD to have them, they will hang the hooks. The problem that we're having is our garden club that is just now getting up and running. We're not a five oh one three C yet, so we're working on that. And I don't think we'll have that in time. In order for PUD to hang that, they have to have a nonprofit. So I'm going to work with a couple other couple other entities here. I know Rotary is offered and we have some other thoughts too. So. And that's another signage. So the watering, I know everybody's probably wondering, how are they going to be watered? My husband and I are going to donate a pickup for the use of the watering. The Weaverville Community Services District is providing us with the water. Tim has said he's gone to his board and I'm thinking he said that they had agreed to provide the water to water the baskets all summer long. And then we just had found down in Orland, California, there is a company that builds. They have small tanks and they're like a fire suppression unit that will fit in the back of a little pickup. So we'll purchase that and Naomi has got us the wand and then they'll be watered every morning. Probably at five, between five and five thirty. And at the end of July or in July, if it's super hot in August, definitely they'll be watered twice a day by the watering committee. So, and just for a few updates on all of this, Caltrans, I'm having, when I tried to do the right thing, because I talked to the county, the road department about the polls. And they're told me the ones, they said that I should present to the board because the polls are downtown and it would be the right thing to do. So I'm trying to do that. And I also am trying to do the right thing with Caltrans and I tried to file an encroachment permit, which I still haven't heard back from, but the Caltrans told me I absolutely cannot put poles up on their poles or put hooks up on their poles. But then PUD is telling me they don't own the poles, county owns the poles. Caltrans locally is saying they don't really know, they don't have a problem with it. So I'm still waiting to hear from the encroachment permit department in Reading. So I would hope also maybe if the board, if I do run into an issue, this board would maybe somehow want to write a letter in support of such a beautiful project for their community. Because I personally can't file the encroachment permit and they absolutely do not allow a garden club. They have something against garden clubs, I guess. I'm not sure what it was. So, and that's it.
All right, Rini, thank you to you and your husband and all of those who are participating with you. It's really a delight to see for starters, the garden club come back. That's near and dear to my heart. I watched my mother-in-law do that for many, many years and pull my little daughter in with her when she was growing up. It's just a beautiful thing to contribute to your community. And so bringing that back is one thing, but then this, I just think of the pride that we all feel when we see our flags up. Those times of year, then the flags are up and then we add these beautiful baskets that will be there with them and even when the flags are not. And I just think it's going to give us all a just a greater sense of pride and joy and thank you for your work. So questions of board members?
Yeah, I have a question for you. I I looked at the hooks there, just in a little example you had. What makes those things four hundred and fifty dollars?
Well, this is the problem. Those hooks that are in that picture, they only hold thirty pounds. The baskets that we're getting will be anywhere fully watered and whatnot, up to eighty pounds. It could even be a hundred pounds. So they needed to beef up the hooks. So that's why it was the cost for them to manufacture those hooks through CED. So it was PUD's contact. So I, my fabricator here in town will make them with a bigger pole, stronger, so they will be able to withstand it, but it has to do with the weight. Because I mean, if you think about it, we're getting sixteen inch baskets, which aren't very big, but if they're fully with water, by watering every day, it makes, it's all about the weight. So, and I don't know anybody that would do just a thirty pound. I mean, that would be a nothing, maybe for fake flowers. So, but it will be beautiful downtown, I'm hoping.
Thank you, Rini. I'm I'm wondering, how do people reach out to you or whomever if they want to join the sponsoring of either the baskets or the hooks?
At the end of the presentation is my name and it should be my email. And if not Jill would have it and certainly email me. So it'd be great.
Great, very good. Thank you so much. All right. All right. Item one point three. Adopt a proclamation recognizing April two thousand and twenty-three as Friday Night Live Month. Yanni and her team from, of students from Trinity High School are with us. Welcome to each of you. So I will read the proclamation. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity that the month of April two thousand and twenty-three be recognized as California Friday Night Live Month. It's just really nice to see all of you. Whereas the California Friday Night Live program was developed in Sacramento in nineteen eighty-four as the model program for the state of California, engaging young people as active leaders and resources in their communities to reduce underage alcohol use and address other challenges faced by youth by building partnerships for positive youth development. And whereas the California Department of Healthcare Services established the California Friday Night Live partnership to serve and support the entire state, ensuring that all young people would have opportunities to participate in youth-driven Friday Night Live programs. And whereas youth in Friday Night Live programs experience an environment that provides for physical and emotional safety, which allows them to express their authentic selves. And whereas participants engage with their communities to learn about its resources, interact with community members and stakeholders and give back in a positive way. And whereas youth partners in Friday Night Live programs have the opportunity to participate And whereas, youth partners in Friday Night Live programs have the opportunity to participate in decision-making, learn how to express their opinions constructively and hear those of others, and take action on issues or projects they are passionate about. And whereas, participants build caring and meaningful relationships with their peers and adult allies that support a sense of belonging. And whereas, youth experience opportunities to engage in interesting and relevant skill development activities that will better prepare them for the challenges they may face and to develop healthy personal attitudes and behaviors related to alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, violence prevention, and academic completion by fostering learning. And whereas, now more than ever is the time to invest in building the resiliency of young people. And whereas, Friday Night Live supports the social and emotional health of young people by providing opportunities for meaningful, positive connections to their school and community. And whereas, during the month of April twenty twenty-three, youth partners at chapters in fifty-two counties will raise awareness throughout the state of California to reduce underage drinking, underage gambling, and tobacco use by mobilizing their communities with a unified call to action. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity proclaims that the month of April twenty twenty-three be recognized as California Friday Night Live Month. And applauds and thanks the leadership, staff, volunteers, and youth who are committed to improving the quality of life for present and future generations. Duly passed and adopted this eighteenth day of April twenty twenty-three by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity. So Yanni, um, congratulations and thank you to your work with these students. And you have some words or they wanna share a little something?
I think I'll pass it on. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Evelyn and I'm our secretary. I'm gonna give a little overview of what Friday Night Live is. Friday Night Live builds partnerships for positive and healthy youth development, which engage youth as active leaders in their communities. FNL is a club at Trinity High School geared towards drug and alcohol prevention and awareness with youth. We facilitated multiple events and activities such as Red Ribbon Week, fifth quarters, and youth workshops. A select group recently traveled to Sacramento to march on the Capitol to spread awareness of big tobacco companies' effect on youth. Locally, we've implemented our Take Back Our Bathrooms campaign to promote vape-free, vape-free bathrooms on our campus. Currently, we are planning every fifteen minutes. This is a simulated fatal DUI crash as part of a drug and alcohol prevention program. On May nineteenth, we have Reaching Forward, a countywide middle school conference to promote healthy decision-making. FNL members plan and facilitate this whole day-long act event. Also, every fifteen minutes will be taking place on April's twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Nicely done. So I will present this to you. Would you like a photo with the board or what, what is your?
Oh, I would make a motion that we approve. This resolution is presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion by Supervisor Fraser, second by Supervisor Lou Wiler. Supervisor Lou Wiler.
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Who would you like? Sure, let's all go.
We all have to stand up.
Look up, look up, look up, and there we go. One, two, three. Thank you, yay.
Thank you. All right.
All right, item one point four. Receive an update from the U.S. Forest Service Representatives regarding matters of interest in Trinity County. We have our local district ranger Tara Jones with us today. Tara, welcome. The floor is yours.
Good morning. It's nice to be back with you today. Um, appreciate the warm reception you gave uh our deputy district ranger Ben Sundahl last month. Okay, so I have a few um items for you and I will uh get this email out to you again, so you have it to refer to. You don't have to take any notes. Um, okay. So first of all, I have an update around hiring. We had good results for our rec hiring event that we had um last month. Uh, we have identified on the west side six positions that we hope to fill through that event and um the results are looking good for that. Our current job openings, we have um openings right now for biological sciences um and foresters. Those jobs are open and we're accepting online applications through April twentieth. Um, if anyone has any questions or if you wanna refer somebody to us, we have staff on hand that are happy to help people through that process. Next month, we'll be hiring more forestry technicians for forestry work out in the woods. Um, and which I highly recommend. It's a great uh job. There's nothing like being out in the woods all day long and calling it work. That sure beats office work. Um, we have folks over there that can help us get through that as well. Um, we uh are still struggling to fill our GIS position, but we're getting support um from the SO, from Reading, for for any GIS needs we may have. And again, we're thrilled to welcome back Ben Sundial on a detail as our deputy district ranger. His familiar familiarity with the west side was a huge benefit um during his last detail, and we expect the permanent deputy district ranger job to open in the next couple of months. Timber, the McFarland uh timber sale and River Timber Sales have been, have had limited operations due to weather, um, which I'm sure you guys probably guessed. Um, we're working uh diligently on a very large integrated resource service contract to address a lot of the uh material in the August fire footprint that didn't sell in our timber sales that we had. Um, and again, this would be an IRSC because the the service workout i- is more expensive than the value of the timber at this point. But we've, we've got a pretty significant amount of money we're putting into those contracts to get that material um out of the woods and so we can move forward with restoration in those areas. We're also anticipating um in this quarter to offer the Lake Timber Sale, which will be up in that Pettyjohn neck of the woods um up by Lewiston. So we should get that timber sale out in addition to that IRSC. Uh, planning, the Bowerman scoping document is currently uh out, so the scoping period is open for that. The project is located in the north part of the county, near Trinity Center and Covington Mill. Uh, the, the scoping document, as you all know, is designed to solicit public comment on um, on, on the proposed veg treatments. We're beginning the process at Hyam Palm uh for, for uh planning purposes. I had a meeting out there with the Fire Safe Council. And then I have a meeting again on Friday with the Trinity County Collaborative Group, a field trip out to the Hyam Palm area. Um, also, we're working uh, we're working with our local partners, with the RCD, as well as the Watershed Center to um increase our capacity to get planning done. And uh we're leveraging some of the monies from the uh landscape, Party Landscape designation to invest in those partnerships. Fuels, I'm happy to report, we had a very successful um prescribed burn out in the Weaver Basin. Many of you probably saw last Friday. Um, we were able to burn ninety-one acres um on Friday and had a lot of support from across the forest. And as well as our, our local partners also sent some folks to help us and uh the Klamath uh Klamath National Forest also sent some folks down from Happy Camp. So that was a good effort, uh good outcomes. Burning is ongoing. We're burning a lot of piles out in the Forest Glen area. I'm averaging fifteen to twenty acres a day. Uh piles are a little bit slower, as you can imagine. Um, but we're, we're staying with it and and diligently working through those. Expect to get another hundred acres done by the end of the week out there. Um, we're putting a service contract together to address the maintenance for the Kellogg Fuel Break. That work should happen this summer. Um, as well as some of the uh acres, the fuels acres in the pilot project. So we expect that contract to be put together and that work to begin this summer. Um, and then once we get the vegetation treated, we'll look at um these prescribed fire to maintain that, that treatment. Uh, you know, the, the burn window is starting to close uh because it's been a really strange uh wonderfully wet uh winter. But um, you know, we're having to, we're still looking for the, any strategic opportunities to, to do prescribed fire, but recognizing those windows are starting to close as we're getting closer and closer to May. Recreation, the Forest Glen Cabin's been, if you get a chance to go to Forest Glen Cabin, I, I highly recommend it if you have friends that are looking for a place to camp and they really would rather camp in a cabin. Um, we've done a lot of work on that cabin. It's, it's looking really good. The floors have been redone. Um, furnitures, bedding, um appliances. It's, it's really coming together. Um, let's see, we also have a um very robust field season planned for our uh trails and backcountry work. We brought in another CCC crew. Um, and now we'll be having two out there. We're adding a pack string to support those efforts out there. And we expect uh for the next four to five years um to be extremely committed to uh rehabilitating those trails um out, not only in the Trinity Alps, but will also be the leader for the uh Sixth National Forest in the North Zone. Um, so we're, we're really step, ramping up our efforts in that area. Uh, so you'll see the barn is gonna get busier and busier up there as we get more people in and get them onboarded and trained up and things. Uh, let's see. Uh, we talked a little bit about partnerships. Um, as many of you know, we have to get those agreements drafted and through our grants and agreements process. Some of our deadlines are coming up um this week, April twenty-first, and we expect to have um we're, we've had good success. Our master for our Good Neighbor Agreement has been submitted to the Grants and Agreements process, um, which will be followed up by a SPA, which we expect to submit on Wednesday. Um, in addition to that, uh agreements with our local partners for substantial amounts have also been submitted. Uh, also, uh in addition to the CCC crews, I did wanna mention, uh, local partner with the Smart Center has been sending folks out to help us do some rehabilitation work in our developed rec uh campgrounds. And they'll also be stepping up and now starting to help us in some of our backcountry work as well. Oh, sorry. Hiring timberfield fuels, okay. Um, that's pretty much what I have uh for you at this point. We are um we're very interested and and excited to get into this uh field season and start to put the Party Landscape funds to good work to actually accomplish fields work on the ground. Remember, twenty-three is, is primarily, you know, what NEPA did, we already have done, so we could make those investments to get work done. And we're also leveraging some of that money to get some of our survey work done for some of those long-term and larger projects. So at this point, um, we'll start Hyam Palm planning. Um, and at the same time, we'll be doing some of the survey work for that Big Ranch project that, that runs pretty much from Burnt Ranch around to Big Bar. And in addition, we're working with um to expand our capacity, we're working with the RCD and the um Watershed Center for them to take on some planning efforts to keep things moving along in some other areas as well. And we're also be looking at using um some national partners and in some other uh very strategic locations as well. So, um, the Party Landscape is, is really exciting and it's more exciting to actually be putting those into tools that will generate work done on the ground. Um, oh, and the other thing I didn't mention was uh the rec residences in Forest Glen. I appreciate working with the county through the permitting process and then uh it goes through our special use permitting process and uh several of those have started to be approved. I expect that those um cabins will be, have construction going on this um, the summer and be, be, being rebuilt. So that's exciting. Any questions for me?
Nice, thank you.
Yes, I do. As always, you know what I'm asking.
About the ranger at South Fork.
South Fork, Harrison Gulch, Weaverville, and Big Bar.
So, what?
Permanent.
Permanent. Um, right now, the, um, and I think Rachel talked about this when she was here, not last time, but the time before that. Um, right now, we don't have the staff to fully support uh the two ranger districts. Um, as many of you know, we, we share a one planning team. Um, so for instance, the TRMU has the, the fish biologist, the botanist, the recreation department, and the South Fork had the timber uh and wildlife, uh with each of them having a little bit of fuels. So we're trying to ramp up our hiring efforts um so that we can eventually look to get those stood back up as individual standalone units. Um, right now, they, they're so interconnected because of the one planning team that the thought is that to have the one ranger with the deputy so that we could be really clear on our priorities and not pull limited resources in too many different directions. So that's where we are right now. The permanent deputy will come out. There hasn't been a decision made. Um, we're, again, the things we're not doing, we're not looking to combine into one giant unit. We're not looking to do that. Um, we're bringing the deputy on, so that'll give us the two line officers um able to make decisions at that line officer level. And then um as we get our staff up to speed and, and get actually staffed up, then we'll take another look at um the South Fork or going back to two rangers, whatever that might be.
Thank you very much. So in the beginning, you had mentioned six positions that you were filling. Were those the positions you just spoke of, or was there other positions?
Um, the, the positions we're looking like we're gonna be able to fill are uh typically, they're in recreation, mostly developed rec. But we are also looking to hire, um, thank you for the question, because we're also trying to hire another archaeologist. We're trying to hire another fish biologist. We're trying to hire, um, we did hire another botanist. So we're looking to really get, get up to speed so we can get those planning teams um trained up and, and uh get to two full planning teams instead of one, because it's very hard to manage one point two million acres with one planning team.
Tara, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Tara, the Fire Chief Association, uh, I think it was Carol Fall, asked about of staffing of the Coffee Creek area with a fire unit. And I, and I believe that the Forest Service representative there said we were not gonna be able to do that this year due to staffing limitations. Does that sound right? I wanted to make sure when I reported it out, I had it right.
Yeah, um, I actually don't know a definitive answer for that right now. We just entered our last uh round of uh fire hire, we call it. And so it's the spring fire hire and I'm, we're working through that right now. Um, but I, what I can tell you is similar to when the, the Mule Creek Station wasn't staffed, we placed orders and brought in con, uh, you know, cover resources to staff those stations um to make sure that there was some coverage up there.
And they did, they did comment on that. They said, you know, basically, they were saying at this point, they didn't look like they were gonna have the right staffing to do it, but that other resources would be easily deployed there as needed.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I just wanna say thank you so much. Every time I've had any exchanges with you, I feel the momentum building in our, in our forests and I really, I really appreciate that. I also appreciate the work that you're working so diligently on between Hyam Palm and, and Burnt Ranch and that whole project there. Um, the fires over the last several years have been really uh devastating, if you will, plus just generating a significant amount of long-term trauma within our communities. And I'm, I'm really looking forward to seeing landscapes change and the opportunity for improvement, both in the interface between private landowners and, and public land. So thank you for that and let me know if I can help you in any way.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So you mentioned that the scoping period is open for comments on the Bowerman Ridge Project. Is that correct? So I think for me, I tend to forget that when the scoping period's open and you're asking for comments, my default is if I don't have any uh thing against that, then I don't need to comment, but that isn't the case, correct? You need those positive comments. Did you wanna sort of maybe highlight that?
Absolutely. The, the scoping period is to, for the public to take a look at some of the treatments we're, we're looking at for the particular area. And, and we're open to all kinds of comments. Um, and typically, um, we, you know, we, we don't, we don't get a lot of comments from people i- in just living in those communities and, and in you know, my humble opinion, the people who live in those communities, probably their opinions matter an awful lot. So uh it's, it's really good if the public pays attention to the opportunities to comment and, and give us their opinions, uh whether they're in favor or against um a particular treatment or, or a project area. That, that's really important. Thank you for that.
All right. Thank you for your time in preparing and being here. It's appreciated. So I hope the rest of your day is a good one.
All right. Thanks so much. I'll email you the notes, so you didn't have to take any.
Thank you. All right. All right, item one point five. Adopt a proclamation of appreciation, recognizing business manager Robbie Camacho upon her retirement after thirty-three years of service to Trinity County. She is joined with uh today by Trinity County Chief of Probation, Ruby Fiero.
Good morning.
Good morning. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity, recognizing business manager Robbie Camacho upon her retirement. Whereas, Robbie started her thirty-three-year career in public service to Trinity County in nineteen eighty-nine. Whereas Robbie started her thirty-three-year career in public service to Trinity County in nineteen eighty-nine as an accounting clerk one at the hospital. She promoted to accountant clerk two and then patient financial representative three. In nineteen ninety-nine, Robbie accepted a promotional transfer to the Health and Human Services Department as an accountant technician two and quickly promoted to senior accountant technician. In two thousand seven, Robbie accepted another personal transfer to the Building and Grounds Department as an office supervisor. In two thousand eleven, Robbie accepted another promotional transfer to the Solid Waste Department as an administrative services officer. Robbie's final position within the county began in twenty twenty as the business manager for the probation department. Whereas Robbie performed her accounting and management duties with a strong dedication to ensuring the fiduciary responsibilities were handled with compliance to all county, state, and federal regulations. Whereas Robbie displayed integrity and confidence in all of her positions within the county and further assisted other county departments with her institutional knowledge. Whereas Robbie demonstrated consistent effort to act proactively on behalf of her coworkers and staff to ensure they received the appropriate pay and benefits. Whereas Robbie was heavily relied upon by the probation department and all of the staff therein navigating difficulties brought on by COVID nineteen in both the financial and human resource arenas of the department. Whereas Robbie would proactively identify duties and tasks being handled by others that she could take on herself or support the effort for. And showed a never-ending supply of energy combined with organizational skills to help stabilize and improve any situation in the multiple departments she worked in. Whereas Robbie has outstanding ability to shift focus from one department to the other and perform admirably at each endeavor along the way with dedication to each department. Whereas Robbie is described by her peers as someone they could count on to get things done and to do it right and cared about all people. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisor thanks Robbie for her thirty-three years of service and wishes her a happy and healthy retirement. Doely passed and adopted this eighteenth day of April twenty twenty-three by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity. Could I have a motion?
Uh, I move that they we approve as presented.
I will second.
Motion by Supervisor Lutwiler, second by Supervisor Gogan.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Supervisor Freezer.
Aye.
Chairman Cox. Aye, and the proclamation passes unanimously. Congratulations.
And I may also present her with a plaque. May I?
Go ahead.
Thank you. And that proclamation was written not just by myself, but by many others in this department that Robbie is, or this county that Robbie has worked with. And I'm just honored to be the one to be able to present it. So this is a plaque commemorating your retirement and sincere appreciation for thirty-three years of distinguished service to Trinity County. Through the hospital, health and human services, buildings and grounds, solid waste and probation. Thank you for your dedication to Trinity County.
Thank you very much.
I'm getting your man up here, too.
You getting my man up there, too? Didn't have done it without him.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, it is ten twelve. We're going to take a short recess and we will uh reconvene at ten twenty. Okay, good. I could use the gavel today. All right, it is ten twenty and we will reconvene picking up that public comment. This time is in is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Is there any public comment in the room?
Hello, my name's Louise Rockwood. I'm the owner of Pine Cove Marina on Lewiston Lake. And I come to you today just to let you know some of my deep concerns about the high water flows. It negatively affects my business in many ways. My business usually starts March first and this year because of the high water. Um, I've had to use time that I spend prepping for my season um by, instead of getting things ready, by pulling things out. I have zero boats in the water right now because of the strain on the docks. Um, I have turned away customers that come every year at this time. Those people don't only come to my business, but they stay at the hotel. Um, they eat in our local restaurants and I've had to tell them to please not come. And as I've found, I've been in this business for twenty-one years. And what I've found is that when I turn people away, it's really hard to bring them back. So um, if I turn a customer away, perhaps I've turned that person away forever. And um, that's really hard to do. Um, I'm a small business. I have a really short season and this is um severely negatively impacting that. And what I'm asking for today is that you hear my concerns and that please um take into consideration the businesses that are affect affected by the water flows. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Louise.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and Staff. My name is Amber Carmen. I am a local business owner and landowner. Um, I'm here today to talk, um, again, I was here about a year ago talking to you guys about the economic impacts of the cannabis industry exodus. And which has already impacted my business personally about forty percent. Um, and I'm in Weaverville and I don't service the cannabis industry directly, so just so you know. Um, now here I am a year later and I'm here to talk about the economic impacts of our waterways. Um, so we're already struggling um prior to these waterway impacts. Um, but now it's even getting worse and the future is not looking very bright for a lot of our local small businesses. Um, a lot of our local businesses rely heavily on tourism. If we don't have a tourism market through our lakes and our rivers, um, what are we going to do? What's our economic uh recovery uh looking like? Um, there's not really other options for us here. Um, most businesses in Trinity County are not uh solely supported by our locals. We have to have that outside funding coming in. Um, in order to do that, um, we need to have places for them to stay and go and play and eat and enjoy. Um, unfortunately, uh, the, we have these wonderful uh hiking opportunities, but unfortunately, that doesn't bring a lot of money here. They come through, they might get gas, maybe a snack on the way out, but we want people that are really playing on the rivers and the lakes. Um, just so you are aware, our community, our community is organizing a group, uh, a Waterways Alliance. Um, we are um supporting our local fishing guides. We're supporting our local businesses and our local users. Um, so it'd be like residents of Trinity County that utilize our recreational um places. Um, so we have some goals. I won't go into them right now. I was planning on it, but I only have a couple of minutes. Um, but we do have some goals as a group, so we will be presenting that as we go move forward through this whole process. And we're hoping to be uh heavily involved with uh future TRRP meetings, future Bureau of Reclamation meetings. And future, obviously, Board of Supervisors meetings um to work with you guys and to achieve uh involvement, transparency, and then obviously economic um flourish, flourishing for all. Um, so please, when you're can moving forward here, please consider uh your business uh per uh business communities that pay permits on our waterways. Um, to be in business. That sets a precedence that we're allowing this to happen. We are a recreational tourism area. Um, so we can't then uh make these people pay permits and do all these, jump through all these hoops and then not have anything like any water for them to even use for their businesses. Um, let's see, um, so I I guess I'm telling you today as a, my business is suffering from tourism's not, from tourism not being as uh good as it used to be. So I know I'm not the only one and you'll probably hear from more. Sorry. Thank you so much.
You're good. Thank you, Amber. Anyone else in the room? Yeah.
Hi, good morning. My name's, my name's Darren Victorine. I'm a local guide. Um, I'm here to talk about the Trinity River Restoration Program's Winter Flow Project. Um, biggest point I want to make is how, like Louise said, how it's affecting our local economy so negatively. Um, and the reason for that is it's a timing issue. Lewiston, Douglas City area in particular, and I would say even Weaverville, maybe down to Junction City to an extent, but Lewiston is going to be hit the hardest. And the reason for that is the time of year that they're, they've moved those spring flows up into a time where us guides and anglers who fish on their own are in the area because that's the time of year the fish are up here. December, January, February, March, and into the first part of April brings in the crowds of fishermen because that's where the fish are in the river system at that time of year. By taking that away from the community with these winter flows and blowing us off the river is is blowing out the the economy. I would say that that's our holiday season. That's the time of year when we make the most money. That's when the most fishermen come in to that area. It's because that's when the fish are there. I would also want to point out that Trinity River Restoration Program has been here for twenty-three years. They've spent three hundred million dollars so far and they still can't produce any more fish. So this particular shoot-from-the-hip experiment that they are doing now is just going to be another failure. We look at their track record, this isn't going to produce more fish. The only thing this is accomplishing is crippling our local economy by not letting people come in. Guides or no guides, DIY anglers that come in on their own, they're staying at our our motels, our hotels, VRBOs, vacation rentals. They're eating at our restaurants. They're spending money at the gas stations, the markets. Um, I think by losing this is we're going to see such a a hard impact on our economy. the markets. I think by losing this is we're going to see such a hard impact on our economy. And if they get their way and start this, December 15th with synchronized flows, it's going to be even more of an impact than what we saw this year when it started February 20th. So we need to make sure that this is taken into consideration the next time this goes to vote for these winter flows. I hope we can put a stop to this. The other thing I would like to add, one more point, not many people understand this. From the old bridge up to the hatchery is what's especially designated fly fishing only section of our river. It is the only piece of water in the state of California that has this, and this opens April 1st, two weeks before the general trout season of April 15th. So by taking that away, we're losing hundreds of anglers that come in during that time of year for that opening day of the flywaters. All those people are coming in, most without guides, but they're staying in our local VRBOs, like I said, or vacation rentals. They're spending money in our community. That alone can bring in hundreds of anglers just that first week of the flywater being opened. We have lost that forever if TRP gets their way and keeps doing this. Thanks.
Thank you, Darren.
My name is Jennifer Globitz, and I'm from Trailhead Pizza up in Coffee Creek. And I don't have a lot to say, but I am in agreement with everybody about the flows affecting the lake and the fact that the lake water is so much, is so low. I feel like they're managing the river a lot and worrying about the river, but not so much the lake. And that does affect my business up in North County because the lake is so low, and we've lost a lot of tourism up there.
Thank you.
I just checked the California reservoir chart.
Could you state your name for the?
I don't have to. Just ask County Council, she'll tell you. Anyway, the flows into the Trinity River are over 10,000 feet per second. The flows into the Sacramento River is 24,000. Sacramento River is a hell of a lot bigger than ours. So we're 6,000 feet per second going down the Trinity River more than the Sacramento River. Yesterday, the lake was at 38% full, today it's only 37. They're draining the lake. You guys need to stop them from doing this.
Anyone else in the room?
My name is Ron Pearl. I've fished and been on Trinity River for about 45 years. I live in Douglas City. I own a house down there. Right now, the river's coming up to the house. There's giant logs floating down the river. The lake is at 37%. As far as everybody here is concerned, this is going to be a drought year for us. Even though we've had all this rain, the level of the lake is going to be determined by how much water they waste. And they are dropping, the inflow of the lake is 2,800 cubic feet per second. Right now, the outflow is 9,250. They need to divert that timing and put it in April to June, whenever the water is too hot for the fish, and keep, keep the water now, and possibly talk to the tribes about not fishing so that the fish will come back to the river for a few years, maybe. And then it'll be like reseeding a lawn. I mean, basically, there is a few fish here. It's dropped dramatically over the years, and they just need to do something about the TRP's method of running high flows at this time of year and change it until the high temperatures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. My name's Brian Clemens. I actually live in Marysville, California, but I spend most of my time up here from September till about April, guiding on the local river here. I actually, to the point where I bought a trailer and can consider this my second home. What I would like to kind of piggyback what everybody's saying is the financial hardship that's going on with TRPs and the winter flow variables. Just to kind of give you an idea, I myself, over those 90 days, that eventually they're going to want to try to focus on between December 15th and April 15th. Myself, I spend roughly $18,000 just in my own money to live up here, eat up here, guide up here. That includes shuttles for local vendors that do that on the river, as well as my rent that I have to stay where I put my trailer. The clients that come up with me during those days spend roughly $40,000 between hotel rooms, food, gas, going to the local hardware store if they need stuff, or even the local fly shop. If you add not only those two, but also DIY anglers, which I roughly state is about 20 to 25 anglers per day that fish every day up here between December 15th and April 15th, they spend roughly $600,000 between food, lodging, materials, equipment, so on and so forth. If you add all those together, what I spend, what my anglers spend, as well as DIY anglers, we're looking at $2 million, it's going to be taken away from this community. Myself and other guides, we can take our anglers elsewhere if we can't fish here on the Trinity. So by me losing 80 to 100 days, it's really not that, because I could go to other rivers. But unfortunately, people come up here due to the serenity of this place, the ecosystem, what it offers our community in order to be able to fish here. And these winter variable flows are causing a huge impact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ryan Sinelli, and I own the Lakeview Terrace Resort over in Lewiston. I'm here to show support for everybody else that had come to speak up. Not too much different to say than what anybody else has, but just wanted to echo the sentiment of the others that have spoken before me. One thing I have realized in learning more and more about this as I go along is that the TRRP has not achieved their stated objectives after spending quite a bit of money. And if you just want to look back at what they want to do and what they have achieved with the amount of money that they spend, it just doesn't seem that they're moving forward at all. So I think something should be done with that to do something that could be more effective for the river, for the tourism, and for all the businesses and the people that are here today. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Ryan.
Good morning. My name is Corey Inaway. I'm the manager of Indian Creek Lodge in Douglas City. I just got there in October. I also want to reiterate what I've been hearing from other folks today about the river, as well as the lake and my concerns there. When I arrived at the lodge and we went into our steelhead season, we actually broke records for Indian Creek for the last, over the last 10 years. And then all of the sudden, as soon as the flow started, and also winter as well, but as soon as the flow started hitting the river, we had cancellations that we've had with guests that have been coming to the river for many, many years. And I did not get those reservations for this coming winter as well. So with that, with the salmon season in fluctuation, with the lake and the levels that it is, I'm very concerned about what's going to happen to the economy up here, and do suggest and request that you guys, the board continues to think of the economy, the employees and the families that are at Indian Creek in making your decisions for the water flows for the coming year.
Thank you.
Hello, Board. My name is Kyle DeGiulio. I'm a fisheries biologist, and I work for the Yurok Tribe. And I was involved in planning the Winter Flow Variability Project. And I don't think it's a shoot-from-the-hip experiment. We've been planning it since 2016. As you've heard from others, the fish are in the river in the winter, and that's when they need the water. I'm worried about the community and the impacts to the economy. I'm worried about the recreation opportunities. I myself am an avid angler, a boater, and a novice hunter. And I live here in the community, and I understand the impacts. But from what I've seen, anytime the water is high, there is an impact, whether it's in the summer, the spring, or the winter. And there will always be people who are impacted. But the river needs scouring flows to remain healthy, and that most of the juvenile fish, which is what we're trying to produce, are evacuated from the system by the mid-April, when the flows normally increase. I hear that the TRP hasn't done, hasn't achieved its goals. I hear that the restoration's not working. But when we try to change and do something that the science says will help, people don't want to support that change either. I don't know what the answer is. I do know what the science tells me, and that's that we need to release more water in the winter. And if anybody lives on a river, stream in the area, they know that's when these rivers and streams have water. So this year was a wet year. Impacts are going to be greater in wet years than dry years. But I can tell you that if we keep doing the same flow releases that we've been doing for 20 years, we shouldn't expect different results. And the concept that I hear, that we need to save the water and release it in the summer because the water's too warm, is not true. It's a misconception. The water is too cold in the spring. The lake shifts the water temperature due to the deep water releases. And we need to make a change and release the water at a time of year when it won't have harmful impacts to temperature. And that's prior to thermal stratification in Trinity Reservoir. This is what the science says. Change is difficult. Change is hard. People have built businesses and livelihoods around a management that has happened for 20 to 40 years. But in the evolutionary time of fish, the way the river is now is a blink of an eye, and the fish haven't fared well during. We need to shift back towards what the fish evolved with to support their life history.
Thank you. Did you want to speak?
Kathy Mitchell from Lewiston. And I am not a fisherman. I've never fished the Trinity River. Sorry, guys. But I am concerned about the lake and the river and the ecosystem, and the impact on producing power this summer when there's no water in the lake. How do we produce power for Trinity County? I really haven't heard much on that. I don't, you know, I follow Facebook. There's a lot of stuff on Facebook. And I don't know what's true, what's not true. So I came out today to see if anybody is even considering those parts. I'm concerned for you guys, too. But, you know, the ecosystem and hearing that, you know, all the ducks are being, you know, the nests are being wiped out, and the ecosystem, and all we're talking about is the salmon. You know, I know salmon are important, but isn't everything else important as well? I mean, it seems like we're missing a lot of other things that are, I feel, are important. It feels like a gut punch to watch all this water going down for some salmon. And I feel like the whole ecosystem should be taken into consideration and not just the fish. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Okay, seeing none. Any on Zoom? Adrian Keith? Good morning, Adrian.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. Adrian Keith from Hay Fork. I would like again to ask for the board to agendize a support letter for Assembly Bill 1111. I just over the weekend, actually, I suppose it was actually just last night, managed to submit the full text of the bill and a draft support letter to the supervisors to give a nice read to. And I would really appreciate seeing this on the next supervisor's agenda. Thank you very much. That's all for me.
Thank you.
I would like to speak.
Dylan Seko?
Okay. Hello, I'm Dylan Seko. I'm property owner in Trinity Center. My family has owned property there since about 1965, and I've fished Trinity River since I was probably five years old. I just want to voice kind of the same sentiment that everybody else pushes. I'm pretty disappointed with the river and the lake management process that we're using right now. I learned that the winter flows were actually voted down, but TRP kind of pushed behind the scenes and got them approved, which is very eye-opening to me. But what I want to ask is that I want to ask that the board take action to push the Bureau of Reclamation and TRP to create a better lake/river management plan, taking the lake level into consideration, because it's both sides of the dam we're looking at here that are really getting hit hard. And I feel like we're using kind of your rainfall analysis and whatnot that's dated, and we all kind of know that it doesn't rain as much as it used to. And I feel like we should look this over again and maybe dial back the amount of water that we are letting out, and just kind of plan better for the future. So that's what I got for you today. Thank you for letting me speak here.
Thank you, Dylan. Tom Stokely?
Thank you, members of the board. I'm Tom Stokely, representing Save California Salmon. And I wanted to address three issues very quickly. Trinity Lake carryover storage studies and possibilities, your authority over flow schedules, and an apology to the Board and the Fishing Game Advisory Commission for item 3.2. I thought Paul Hoosier's presentation to you at your last meeting was very informative and helpful. I was encouraged with the support for a required minimum pool for Trinity Lake. I've been working on these issues since 1992, when I previously worked for the county, and subsequently, I've worked on them as well. And I'd like to come back to you at a meeting in June to discuss what has been done and what needs to be done to get a higher minimum pool for Trinity Lake. Trinity County's water policies are inherently schizophrenic because you have three different interests. You have the lake, the river, and Trinity PUD power. Establishing a higher storage level for Trinity Lake is one thing all interests have in common. I've commissioned several studies and testimonies before the State Water Board and the Bureau of Reclamation over the past 30 years, and I'd like to share them with you. The bottom line is that I believe a 1.2 million acre foot minimum cold water pool is the appropriate cold water pool, and there is being an EIS prepared that might be a vehicle to accomplish it. Secondly, because the Trinity Management Council has a supermajority voting rule, allowing only one dissenting vote, as you know, with the winter flow decision, your member's vote was the deciding vote. While I've literally spent decades bemoaning the supermajority voting rules, now that Liam is your representative, I encourage you to keep that supermajority voting rule in place. So that you have the final say on river flows and other issues, if you can find one other. I apologize to the Board and your Fishing Game Advisory Commission regarding Agenda Item 3.2. I had mistakenly thought that the commission's recommendation was to replace the existing temperature objectives, but in fact, the recommendation is to add the new objectives at Lewis Dam, which I agree with. I know that this confusion on my part caused the commission and the board members great consternation, and I apologize profusely. And that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Rhoda?
Hi, this is Rhoda King from Trinity Center, North Lake area. I would like to wholeheartedly support our local businesses and all of the speakers that have talked about the water flows. This is so important up here. We're losing more and more of this year after year. I also would like to echo Adrian Keith's comments in support of Bill 1111. And also, extremely important, we're losing families in this community, and we need to just do whatever we can to support every possible industry that we can in this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rhoda. I have no other raised hands, no shouts.
Oh, hang on.
One more. Oh, maybe not.
How do you raise a hand?
Go ahead, Glenn. That's fair.
How do you raise a hand? I'm sorry. My name's Glenn Bjorkman. I moved to Trinity 10 years ago, so I'm a newbie. I'm just getting up to speed on this. I actually had four points. Most of them have already been covered. But the downstream flooding has created fallen trees and blocking the river, destroying perches for the birds that are there. There's erosion happening. Above the dam, I've watched the lake go down two feet, two and a half days. Somebody needs to start realizing that if you Somebody needs to start realizing that if you want to generate electricity, a low lake creates a problem. The lower it is, the more water it takes, wasting more water. It's killing the economy. I haven't heard anybody talk about the difficulties with the low water we had with the fires. And getting rid of the super scoopers would just be devastating. I have here that I really encourage the board to keep the pressure on to encourage the urgency and to go up to a higher level of our congressmen, our governors, so that this is more visible. And the discussions with these folks, I think, should start with one question. All the lakes in California, except Trinity, are running at 90% or overflowing. And we're down in the 30% because of this mismanagement. And somebody has to answer for that. It's just mismanagement. Just look at any other lake in California. My other home's here in Santa Barbara. Kachuma Lake is flowing over. And it's, it's just hurtful to see the mismanagement. And I appreciate all, everybody's effort. Everybody can win with this, including the fish, if it's managed more properly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Glenn. Hunter Ward.
Hello, I'm using my son's Zoom. So my name is Hava Ward. I'm a camp host at Tannery Campground on Trinity Lake. I've been the camp host up there for going on 12 years. I work for Shasta Recreation Company. So we manage all of the campgrounds and lodge facilities for the Forest Service. So there's eight, there was 18, now we're down to 16 because of some of the closures. But we see a direct impact of a full lake versus a low lake. It impacts our finances, our budgeting, everything. We have thousands of campers that come into the campgrounds. They bring their boats. They bring their money. They bring tourism, like amazing amount of tourism. If we have a low lake level, there's nobody. Last year was the most pathetic, sad, and heartbreaking year we've ever had. When we can make, just in my campground alone, over a three-day weekend, brings in like $12,000 worth of vehicle fees, extra vehicle fees, campground fees, the amount of money that they spend at the local businesses, restaurants, they go up to Trinity Center. I have people that go to Travelhead Pizza, the Yellow Jacket, the little place at the KOA, can't think of the name right now. They go to the Trinity Ops Resorts. They go hiking. They go all over the place to go to Weaverville, Lewiston, you name it. If we don't have the campers up there, you guys are losing millions of dollars every single year just on the tourism. So we need the water in the lake. You know, we're seeing Shasta lakes because we live in Redding and we're half the time up in Trinity. But we see Shasta lakes full. And then we see Whiskey Town's always full. We have our campers come up asking, well, why is the water up there? You know, we grow up by, we Whiskey Town, how come they have the water? It's like, well, that's our water. You know, that's Trinity water that's been pumped over the hill and stuff. So we need to have the lake full when we're coming up from an 81% deficit. You know, and we're still only at 37% when everybody else is full. That's, that's wrong. So that's about all I have to say. But I'm also part of the new group that Amber was talking about as a stakeholder. And our company is, is looking into being part of that as well. Because we have a say. If we don't have the funding that comes in through the fees, that affects our staffing, that affects everybody, you know, our facilities getting worked on, trees being taken care of, all of that stuff has a huge impact. So we need the business, we need the staffing, we need the people. We need the people on the lake. We need the people in the river. We need the people in the businesses. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Kayan Abel. Kayana. Kiana. Emily Henderson. You're muted.
Thank you. My family has enjoyed Trinity Lake since 1984. When we began going to Windtoon, you couldn't see through the campground because it was just full of RVs. It has been so sad the past few years to be there in the middle of July. And it looks like it must be April or October because you can see straight through from the camp loops to the store. There are so few visitors there. We used to have a group of 50 people who would come and gather as like a family reunion. And there's only 12 of us left. People aren't going to make the drive anymore from San Diego or from other places that are far away to have to commute to Cedar Stock to access their boat on the water because the north end is so dry. And I think in the reconsideration of how the water is drained from the lake, there's got to be some sort of shift to think of this in a multi-year fashion, not just a single year in isolation. There needs to be an adjustment factor of some sort. If a prior year was a dry year, take what you might normally release in a wet year and ratchet it back a bit by, you know, 10, 15%. Whatever the number needs to be, there needs to be an adjustment factor. Our environment doesn't exist in a one-year bubble. Our environment exists based on the compounding effect of year after year after year. And to make a declaration on a wet year based on a single year is irresponsible and just incomprehensible. It doesn't make any sense. We have to look back to understand where we presently stand. The minimum level of the lake would be a great place to start, but we also have to make adjustments based on the history. We can't get too excited about a wet year, even though it doesn't even feel like a wet year. We need to look at things more cohesively. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Pine Cove Marina.
Hello, my name's Matt Romaine. I'm Louise Rockwood's husband. She owns Pine Cove Marina. She's already spoken. I just wanted to reiterate and also support for minimum Trinity Lake levels. I feel it affects Lewiston Lake. Especially when, you know, we went through these 11,000 flows, the max flows in 2019. One thing that could happen or may happen with the high flows when the lake is so low is it's releasing sediment into Lewiston Lake. And it sometimes takes a couple of years for the lake to completely recover. Last fall was probably one of the best seasons that Louise had said in 20 years for fishing on Lewiston Lake. But regardless of all that, it does affect tourism. We have enough of Mother Nature's influence on us with fires. You know, the lake gets so low, and if we do have an extremely wet year coming, you know, more sediment, more dirt gets pushed downhill. Anyway, I just wanted to second all that, not waste too much of your time, but also, you know, minimum lake level seems like it just makes sense to me. It just seems like common sense, and I'm not a scientist or anything like that, but there's got to be a better way. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Kayana. She's got, she's trying. She's got a mic issue. And also, there's some people who are having trouble with a previous. I don't know how this helps them if they're not online and they can't see it. There was a, there was a Zoom link that was updated. So Veronica's trying to get on as well. So someone else gave me the code. I'm taking a 10-minute break. Come back at 11:10. I don't understand what happened. Actually, what was wrong with the first segment? Oh, sure. I don't know what happened.
It's always public comment. Public comment can always kill you.
They're all the same? Go to the board meeting before this one. Go to the April 4th board meeting and click on that link. Okay. Okay. So all you missed were proclamations, presentations and proclamations. You haven't missed board business. And so we've been aware of this since partway through the proclamations.
I know, I got sunburned. I know. I know.
From county at Sioux Doo River Artistic Theater.
Are we on? Okay, it is 11:10. We are back in session. Okay, have supervisors go ahead and return to the dais. We are continuing public comment. Apologize for some technical issues and hopefully those have been resolved. And there should be some more folks waiting on public comment. Oh, before we do that, we'll go ahead and let supervisor make a clarification.
Oh, I don't really think I need to clarify. We did have a chat concerning something I said was a hot mic. Well, that conversation is sidelined and I have nothing against listening to public comment. And I'm not going to go into the bathroom conversation that led up to that comment.
Innocent comment that got caught on a hot mic and was misunderstood because it was only a piece of a statement. So just want to make sure that there isn't a misunderstanding. So, thank you. Keith?
Keith Groves, Trinity Center, Madam Chair, Supervisors. I want to back Tom Stokely's comments. For all the complaining or discussion is a better term, excuse me for complaining. The only real actions that are available to us today would be to look at minimum pools. We've talked about this for years and years trying to get this and the only thing that I would, me and Tom have had a little disagreement over is he likes the one million number and I'm a fan of a 1.5.
Okay, thank you, Keith. Kiana?
Kiana. Hey, guys, can you hear me now?
Yes, nicely done.
All right, all right. Hey, hey, board, hey, community members out there. My name is Kiana Abel. I'm the Secretary here at Trinity River Restoration Program. And I also wanted to say that I think there's a misconception out there that Trinity River Restoration Program has some sort of lever or ability to change or decrease or increase the amount of water that we're allocated every year. And we do not. It's, you know, it's one of those things where if we did go outside of our bounds and there would be several lawsuits coming at the, at our program for not following protocol. So we do, as Keith was saying, we do also support a minimum pool and there are avenues to getting that through to the appropriate organizations and we, as the program, will be advocating for that. Whatever numbers that we advocate for, I'm not really sure what those are. But we, you know, every time someone calls me about this in the office, I suggest that they get in touch with the board of supervisors so that they can express their concerns because the Trinity County also has a seat at that table. So I just wanted to say that. We are all community members here. I see, you know, folks in the crowd that I work with in other aspects and, you know, we also share all the same concerns about economy and everything that's going on. So we're not, our ears are not closed to you, but just know that we don't have the ability to change what the amounts that we're releasing to the, to the river. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Veronica Kelly Albies.
Good morning, Veronica Kelly Albies, Douglas City. Well, first, I want to confirm that Supervisor Frazier is always open to public comment and I know he supports it. So hot mic, whatever. But I actually wanted to bring to the board's attention that several years back, that county council would attend the planning commission meetings to help guide and provide support for the things that they were working on and that they are, have not been there the last year or year and a half maybe. And I would like to suggest that you reinstate having county council at these meetings as well, especially as we move into bigger projects and bigger decisions that will be made, be done to help plan our future for Trinity County. There are some things that are starting to really be prevalent in conversations between the commissioners and some of the comments that probably could use some guidance as they continue to work towards everybody in Trinity County's best interest. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have no other raised hands, no chat. Okay, with that, we will close public comment. All right, reports and announcements, item 2.1. Number one, report from department heads. Any department heads in the room wishing to report out? See, yes.
Good morning, Chair Supervisors, Drew Plabani, Trinity County Planning Department Cannabis Division Director. Just wanted to give you some updates from the program. We are now up to 168 small cultivation licenses that have been noticed for SEQA compliance. Of those, 106 have been picked up. In sort of other projects, we have 12 pending conditional use permits. Six directors' use permits. We've received a total of three retail applications, one of which has been approved and is now operating. And we have two pending retails remaining. And that, that's pretty much the update. I don't know, obviously, we've been working on ordinance revisions with the ad hoc. And I don't know if you have any questions for me, but thank you.
Question, Drew. Where are the other two dispensaries going to be located?
I believe one is a Hayfork location and then the other one is the Douglas City location.
Thank you.
Okay, no other department heads in the room, any on?
Just wanted to report out, because we report out when settlements are signed, that we do have a settlement agreement in the case of Carlson versus County Trinity, a copy of which is available at the clerk's office for public record if anyone would like to do it.
Perfect, thank you. Any department heads on Zoom? I have no raised hands, no chats. All right. Item two is report from county administrative officer. And her last board meeting as such, so we'll say thank you for your nine weeks of giving to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Liz Hamilton. This is actually wrapping up week 13 and I have been counting. No, it's, I have no formal report. I just wanted to say thanks for the opportunity. I have learned a great deal of information just with, about my colleagues in other departments and just really appreciated working with HR and admin staff. It's bittersweet. I will, I will miss them, but I'm looking forward to welcoming transformally tomorrow. And, you know, just working on that transition plan over the next couple of weeks, so.
Very nice, thank you. Report from members of the board of supervisors. We'll start with Supervisor Frazier.
I've had a deceptively quiet last two weeks and I have nothing to report out.
All right, Supervisor Lutwaller.
So out of county travel, I was in Eureka Monday of last week for a Office of Small Business Advocate Regional Convening. It was focused on cannabis and the impact of, you know, basically how do they advocate for small business when it's cannabis? And a lot of the message was basically, and there's most of the ways we can't. Most of the ways we can advocate for small businesses, we can't when it's cannabis because of federal programs. So there was talk about, well, what could be done and how could we have a bigger impact on those small businesses? It was probably about 40 or so people. Drew was participating remotely and Adrian Keys was there in person as well. And then later that week was in Sacramento for the CSEC Legislative Conference and Board Meeting. And most of the focus there was on the At Home Initiative, which is about homelessness. And I won't go into a lot of the details. I did emphasize when they asked for all counties to endorse the program. I said, well, just, I need to do my homework, but I want to make sure that when we go to endorse, we can see that there is flexibility to reflect each county's unique needs and situation. Because I said, we have homeless for a lot of reasons, but one of them that maybe others don't share is up to 20% of our homes lost due to wildfires and our inability to get them rebuilt and insurance costs that are prohibitive and things like that. So wanted to make sure that they recognize that that kind of flexibility has to be there, in my opinion, for an endorsement. That's something I think we'll need to bring before the board to decide whether we are or aren't going to endorse. They also had the National Center for Public Land Counties. And this is a nonprofit that's being set up to basically gather information that would support these counties that, like ours, that have a high percentage of land that's owned by the public. That we would have better ammunition, if you will, when we go to the federal government and ask for them for more money in the form of payment in lieu of taxes. And that's the whole purpose of that organization and they're looking for, they're hoping that each county would give 1% of the, I can never think of the right, LATCF funds, the 4.8 million. What they've asked is, every county got a different amount, but they would love to see up to 1% from each county. And that would be an endowment, basically, and then that organization would operate off the interest of the mons that they, money they would receive through that. So that's another thing we'll need to put on the board to decide, do we want to support that financially? Up to, you know, it can be, they said, we'd look at 1%, but anything is good. And so they're looking for every county to weigh in whether they're going to support it and how much. So we'll need to add that to our agenda at some point. And at the Fire Chiefs Association, I did offer my apologies. I'll do it here again in person. I, I think I had, well, I know, I had an error in judgment when I recused myself at our last meeting when we were considering snow maintenance for the fire departments. I was trying to err on the side of making sure there was no sense or concern about conflict of interest. But basically, as a volunteer on a volunteer fire department that takes care of its own snow maintenance, there simply was no conflict of interest. And in the end, my recusing myself meant that that didn't go through. And so I will continue to try to work on that and have done some research about how we can get that back on the agenda. But I apologize to all the fire chiefs and apologize to those of you who are counting on that as well. Emergency communications, I've been touched with the sheriff's office and I think people are familiar that we have had for, well, ever since the jail moved, we've had limited emergency communications to some parts of the county because we didn't have the same line to the top of Oregon Mountain to send out the signal to the far reaches of the county. And so we've had trouble with that, getting people to respond. Then we had problems with snow access. And more recently, there was a problem with engineering. So I was interacting once again with the CEO of Frontier Communications. We now have, tomorrow is the scheduled date for that to be installed. So we do expect that to be completed, but the sheriff wanted to make sure people know that's step one. There's still some other things that have to happen with other entities, but this was the big one that, that we were, been waiting on. So we hopefully will have that back in place. Right now, we still have parts of the county that simply don't get their pages for the first responders. And then on cannabis retail was mentioned, Drew mentioned, I had heard about the soft opening, if you will, of the cannabis location here in Weaverville. So I stopped in there the other day when I went to Holiday Market since it's 50 feet away. And what was interesting is, one, I could never have told what building I was looking at if I hadn't looked at it, you know, and knew what the name that I was supposed to be looking at. You actually can't see in the windows, but you can see out the windows, so that's interesting. But I, I got to talk to the people inside for a little bit and what I thought was interesting, they said, they'd had over 100 visitors since they had a soft opening on Friday at that point. This was early Monday. 70% of them were over the age of 55. And that in that short time, they had generated around $400 in sales tax for the county. So they were just trying to, you know, educate me and that's why I was there, was to get educated and I thought it was interesting. They did say that they have very, and she showed me, very limited amount of Trinity County product on the shelves right now. And that's mostly because we don't have the manufacturing distribution set up here. So things that get grown here get shipped away somewhere else, get packaged under somebody else's name and might come back. So there could be Trinity County product on the shelves, but it doesn't look like it. And so they're hopeful that that will start to come together, but, and, and also emphasize their desire to work closely in supporting other local businesses so that when people come there, they can help to send people to restaurants and other stores. I'll save the rest for the ad hoc reports.
All right. So, Razor Cooken.
Yes, I had, I actually had one question for Rick. When you talk about the homeless situation and our fires, are we, is our percentage kind of commiserate with like Paradise as far as their jump that they have of?
Nobody else made a comment. I had some people stop by afterwards and thanked me for making the comments because they said that's similar, but we didn't get into any conversations to know how our percentage compared to others. And I, and I don't know that answer.
Thank you. I had a relatively quiet week. I did go to a town hall meeting in Lewiston on the 12th. Rick was at CSEC, I think. And some of the people and more were at the meeting and they spoke about the issues that were probably broke, brought up most at public comment, the increased water flows and the economic loss in Lewiston, the Upper Lake Area District 123, we'll say. And it's concerning to me. It's concerning to this county, the economic loss. And what it does to them, there's, you know, a lot of these businesses have a short season. And I just wanted to let them know that we are trying to do all we can to get this, you know, rectified so that the fish, PUD, tourism, all work together, you know? I don't want to see any, any of it suffer. We need low PUD rates. We need fish. We need water in the lake. It's a tough balancing act, but we are starting to juggle. So it's, I think there'll be some good answers on the horizon for you guys. And we're at it. And this is, you saw, I was there. I'm at it. So we'll, we'll keep it going and thank everybody for showing up. It's a big thing when people show up for one, one item, and I think we had 20 odd people there and it was the first one. And I would say, keep doing them. I will show up. I'm sure Rick will show up too. And it's how you get through your local government, by just doing those things and us coming there and listening and hearing and getting. and getting a, you know, a rounded opinion on, on what everybody thinks. So thanks, everybody that was there. Thank you for getting it together. I was ha- happy and proud to be there. So thanks again to everybody. Appreciate it. That is it for me.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
I went to the Hawkins Bar, um, Community and Volunteer Fire Department meeting, just to have a visit with them. And I'll, I'll share more findings regarding the, the insurance issues. But while with the Hawkins Bar community, uh, specifically the, the folks in Trinity Village, it was brought to my attention that their, um, insurance for their volunteer fire department has gone up significantly, to the point where they're, they're overburdened with their ability to be able to, um, afford it. And uniquely, um, the Hawkins Bar Volunteer Fire Department Downriver, uh, which consists of the Loma, Big Bar, Bigfoot area, those are non-district volunteer fire departments. So they don't have, um, any kind of tax embedded, uh, to receive the funding that they need. They, they literally, um, are at the mercy of donors. And hot dog sales and bake sales and all of those fun things that, that we all do to try to raise money. So that is something that they're, they're heavily struggling with. Another concern, um, that was brought up is they've, they have a, um, a water pump that is put, what is within the county roads department, um, right of way. And they've been requesting the opportunity to have a generator put right next to it. And they haven't been able to, to get very far with that. And the generator would be for the, obviously the times when the power goes out, which is typically, um, more often than not due to wildfire. And that, that generator would allow them to pump from the river, uh, making sure that their fire hydrants and so forth have enough water protection for that community. So that's something I, I told them I would help, uh, look into. Then, um, something that's also pretty unnerving is the fourteen miles into Trinity County, which takes you about to Cedar Flat, including two ninety-nine, all county roads, all four service roads is serviced by the Hoopa ambulance. And they are going to have to, uh, stop that service because of lack of, uh, reimbursement, uh, according to the, the group there, uh, to, to provide those services. The Measure C funding has, has been cut. And we need to actively seek a way to fund ambulance services in Western County. Because if that falls, there will be zero ambulance service for all the way into the Cedar Flat region and all of the outlying county roads. That's something that along with the struggling volunteer fire departments, um, we cannot, we cannot allow that to not be available. Um, in addition to that, they are also concerned with, as Rick mentioned, the emergency communication is still having an ongoing problem. The fire departments are not receiving, um, their, their calls. They have been getting them through cell phones, uh, because landline phones still do not exist, uh, to some degree. And it's just kind of feels like there's this big squeeze on the folks who are really just trying to help literally save people's lives and save communities. So that's one of the, I'm going to stand next to them, beside them and continue to work with the volunteer fire departments until we can figure out how to deal with these issues of, uh, high insurance costs, lack of, uh, ambulance, potential lack of ambulance support, and the communication issues that, that are still, um, bothering and up, just basically stopping their ability to, to provide emergency services. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, my board report. So the first item would be PSA two meetings. Those are now in person. So they are held here in this board chambers. Seventy-two hours before the meeting, there will be an agenda posted on the bulletin board right outside the door. And you're welcome to attend. The next meeting is May fifteenth at ten AM. I've been collecting historical information regarding PILP funding and directing my findings over to the RCRC Policy Advocate, Siddharth Nag, um, on behalf of our county, and he's collecting that on behalf of all the counties and, um, within RCRC, whom the PILP funding affects. So that PILP funding, just if you're aware, that's payment in lieu of taxes. So there's a lot of historical data on that, how that is related to and differentiates from secure rural schools funding is an interesting dive. Um, but just for brevity, know that this is being advocated on our, on higher levels, far beyond what we could do as a county. This is many counties, large and really important to us to have this revenue stream reinstated as it was years ago. I was charged by a district two constituent with learning the details of the use of the funds that Trinity County residents have been paying through the two Shasta College bonds that we all see on our property tax bills. And so my inquiry into the college generally led me to Kevin O'Rourke. Kevin is the CEO of North State Together. And so while we are getting answers to those, uh, Shasta College bond issue questions, and he'll be coming before the board to present on June twentieth, I believe. Um, that led to a larger conversation, which, um, I invited Supervisor Lutweller into. And I'll save that report for the Economic Development Ad Hoc section. It's hard to know which section to report out on the kind of overlap. I guess we'll save that one for the economic and DOT as well. So, um, that's the end of my formal board report. Jill?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Cox, we had a question what PSA two stands for. Thank you. Sorry, that is really nondescript. I apologize for that. It stands for Public Service Area Two, which is also very nondescript. The rest of that title is Area Agency on Aging. And there are, I believe, five areas throughout the state. And so within our region, this is one area where we are one committee where we have two supervisors assigned to it. So it happens to be Supervisor Lutweller and myself. Last year, last two years, it's been Supervisor Gogan and myself, which is his schedule. Didn't allow him to continue their meeting schedule. And it's, it's an interesting dive into how these funds are distributed for a variety, all, all varieties, everything from, from fall prevention to, um, helping you with your estate planning and everything in between. There is an advocacy group, the Advisory Board, that we have the ability to put four Trinity County folks on, three members of the public, and then Mike Katani from, um, or OES serves on that. And it, it really is fun. If you want to come and just learn what goes on and what kind of advocacy is there. It's, it's an interesting way to do it. So here's the answer. Um, we're moving on to our reports from ad hox and our first is the Good Neighbor Authority. So this is exciting. We're, we're winding up. The, the master agreement itself, as Tara reminded us, has already been submitted to grants and agreements. And so what they're working on now is called the SPA. That's a supplemental project assessment. So the Good Neighbor Authority, think of it like a great big umbrella. And then underneath that, these specific projects then are, this is the, this is where the funding actually lands. And then the projects for that funding are identified. So David Kolbeck from DOT is assigned by our department head, uh, Director Kokis, um, has been working directly with our local district ranger, Tara Jones. And then there's been three other Forest Service representatives, Monique Gray and, uh, Kelly. Last name right now, apologize. No, uh, from the Forest Service. So I, I guess the part that I want to let you know is that within this SPA, there are seven budgeted work items that do cover the entire county. And, and really, to watch these two government agencies with very specified terms of allowable operation, work so tenaciously to figure out how to make this a win-win for both agencies has been really heartening. Um, but I do want to manage expectations. They're doing their best. And there are lines that they'll come up against that neither one can budge just because that is what is and is not allowable. But boy, if they can be creative and figured out these two have done it, it's impressive and, and it's been absolute delight to watch. So this SPA gets presented to Grants and Agreements by end of day tomorrow, which is two days ahead of the deadline to do so. And so they're doing that very purposefully, um, to make sure that we, um, don't have any issues. And then, and then we all sit with bated breath and see if it comes out of Grants and Agreements. And, um, I have high hopes and it's just been a delight. So this, this ad hoc is just about to end. We're on the precipice of seeing the outcomes. So thank you to both of them and all involved. Okay, uh, the next ad hoc is our strategic plan and leave that to Supervisor Lutweller.
Yep, the, uh, group continues to meet. The work is now scheduled to be in a handoff slash working session with our new CAO on April twenty-eighth. So, uh, we've been meeting every other week or so to try to flesh the plan out. And, and this last meeting that I'll be involved in is a working session and also, uh, bringing the CAO up to speed so that he can take the reins and, and bring it forward. And then at some point, he'll be bringing all of that back to the board for consideration.
Okay, perfect. All right. Trinity County Water, uh, does our water ad hoc have anything to report out today?
So myself and Heidi are on the Trinity County Water Ad Hoc. And I will let Heidi say her piece.
I just, it's really, it's a question, a wondering, if, if I may. After listening to the extensive amount of public comment and having followed, the work that's been done in the river and, and the concerns regarding the lake, I look at the broad scope of people who are bringing questions. And it's, it's not a, it's not a singular voice. It's many voices that are coming to us with many concerns, with all types of backgrounds. And I just feel like it would be remiss to not wonder if there is a way for us as a board to ask for, is there any way to cause a pause on the, on the activities that are happening in terms of the high water flows? Is there any way that we as a board can ask for that until things are, um, washed out, if you will? I don't, and I don't, I don't even know if that's possible, but it's something that I, I feel like. I think it's just really important that I, I've, I've been in systems and structures before where once something got started, it was allowed to just continue because that's what had gotten started. And years and years on the water board taught me that sometimes, um, you have to stop long enough to figure out what is happening. And I, and I just feel really compelled to ask for some type of a pause to check in with, with, on a deeper level with, with what's taking place and how it's impacting our community. I don't, I don't know how to go forward with that, but it's something I, I want the board to consider discovering a way. So maybe county council has something they can say.
So there are some options the county has, um, you know, both legally and, and looking at it politically. As county council, of course, I can't, um, have that type of working session because I'm protected under train client privilege. Uh, so I can't, you know, give you all your options and talk with you about the pros and cons of them, um, publicly. I have to do that in private. So what my recommendation would be is because we have information that came to our attention after the posting their agenda. And because it necessitates action to be taken immediately prior to the next agenda, that we look at doing an emergency closed session this afternoon. Uh, and if we have a four-fist vote, we can do that. And then we can kind of talk about, um, options in that, that forum. And then whatever comes from that, again, again, we can, well, we can discuss publicly. But again, I have built convey my information to you in a private setting. So, um, that would be my recommendation for today.
Can, can she make that motion at this time?
She can make that motion at this time with those two findings. Information was received after the posting the agenda and action is required prior to the next scheduled meeting.
So we will add it to our closed session today?
Add it to our closure, the closed session. We'll put it as initiation of litigation.
So I will make a motion that we, help me with the language, that we.
Make a motion to add an emergency closed session item, uh, anticip-, uh, let's see, it will be initiation of litigation. Uh, and the reason for it is because the information obtained regarding this matter was obtained after the posting the agenda. And based on the emergency nature of it, it requires action prior to the next board meeting. And as a result, we'll do it as an emergency item requiring four-fist vote.
Is that your motion?
I'm, I'm thinking, can I think for a second?
Absolutely. You bet.
What, so what I'm asking for is, is, I guess, I want, I don't want to start another fire either, you know? I just, I just feel like there's some stuff that needs to be, I don't want to say stuff, that's.
Just because you've requested conversation doesn't necessarily mean that you are agreeing to start something. It means that you want to hear some information that she can't give you in this setting.
Okay. Then I make a motion to request a, an emergency enclosed, uh, a closed session.
Okay.
Regarding the, the flow issues.
With the language she gave and Ashley captured. Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All right. So, uh, motion by Supervisor Carpenter Harris, second by Supervisor Lutweller, and again, requiring forfeits vote. Supervisor Lutweller.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
All right. And then by the time we get to closed session, will you have some language for me to read out? Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Anything else on Trinity County Water? We good?
No.
All right. All right. Moving on to our cannabis ordinance. And do want to read out, there had been a request for additional verbiage surrounding this, which I know I captured. Here it is. I think I have it. It's the scope and term that had been sent. All right. So it was initiated, um, I know I've read that date into the record before and I have it somewhere. But I think what we need to read into the record today is this clarified scope for, for eighteen twenty-three. It is to support staff in preparing cannabis ordinance updates that will be proposed to the public and the full board of supervisors during this calendar year. Will provide input to staff regarding case-specific situations that are associated with potential changes to the cannabis ordinances. Cannabis ordinance updates include, but are not limited to, changes such as refining language and terms, addressing inconsistencies between individual ordinances, considering the potential for multi-year permits, and addressing the potential for a larger canaby, canopy cultivation operations. And, um, it is anticipated that this will be completed by June of this year. And with that, uh, does the cannabis ad hoc have a report?
Do you want to go first?
Go ahead. You've got it.
So we are contin-, we're continuing weekly meetings. These are, uh, generally two or two and a half hours. Uh, I think the last one went a little over. And, uh, again, just continue to pick, uh, pieces of the various ordinances, looking for some clarity that we can provide back to the consultants, who are then, uh, sending us the revised, uh, cannabis ordinances that we would put forward for public consideration and then board consideration. And, uh, one thing that came out of our last meeting was, uh, a notice in the paper last week, uh, that the coming before the planning commission is a recommendation to change, uh, the term definition used to determine if basically a special approval is required for specific cultivation, uh, applications. And this is, uh, primarily to address, uh, a, a pretty strong number seventy or plus, uh, applications that had been approved in the past, but because of a reinterpretation of terms and definitions, made it possible for those to have to require variances, as I understand it. And, uh, one, we're moving away from the way we've been using variances because we've learned that we've kind of misused that. But i- in whatever way we're going to do that, these, uh, were suddenly potentially going to have to be considered in a much different way than when they were originally approved. So the planning commission will be hearing that, I believe, later this month. Did that get all scheduled through? Yeah. Uh, at their next meeting and then, uh, so there'll be public hearing there. At their next meeting and then, so there'll be public hearing there. Then that would become before the board for a second public hearing. And if it's approved, it'll move forward, which will clear the way for dozens of applications to be approved and get back under operation. Again, this is those that were previously approved. And if it fails, then they'll have to go through a different process.
I think that captures the gist of our last meeting. Do you have? Time what?
Oh, timeline, oh, it's like the public meetings and such?
Yeah.
Yeah, what we've been trying to push for is for May timeframe. And I think in fact, before May 15th, we're basically saying mid-May to schedule our two public workshops so that we can bring forward to the community the work that is being proposed for these new updated ordinances. And that would allow us to get that feedback before we do a final version that would then come back for hearings through, you know, planning commission board, so forth. So that is what we're scheduling or trying to schedule to. And a big part of that is when we will have the right information from our consultants that, you know, we think is ready to share. And it sounds like Drew feels the need to clarify.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to let you know that since we had the last ad hoc meeting, I've gone back and forth with Mentor Harnish and Ringcon who, you know, are doing our ordinance revision, but are also in charge of the general plan update. And we provided to them a zoning chart of the approved zones for the various different cultivation and cannabis license types. And we have, so we did not receive the revised first draft Monday as we had expected. And so now we're scheduled to have a meeting with both of those teams and county staff tomorrow to discuss the, the, basically the zoning districts that are allowable for cannabis uses. And so we'd likely, based on the timeline that they provided to me, on Monday, we likely won't see the revised first draft until this Friday. And the reason that I came up to provide some clarification is they've requested that we try to coordinate the public workshops for the cannabis ordinance along with some of the other general plan update objectives. And they've proposed, they proposed June 6th and 7th to have those. And I, and I responded to say that the 6th and the 7th didn't seem great because the 6th is a board meeting day. So I proposed the 7th and 8th, but you know, if, at your direction, if, if you would like us to try to make that happen sooner, I'd be happy to communicate that.
I think we can probably have that discussion on Thursday and try to nail that out a little closer.
Thank you.
If that works for.
Is that end of report then for the ad hocs?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, moving on to economic development report. Supervisor Lutwiler, do you want me to begin or would you care to?
Uh, no, I'll let you.
So the, the manner in which this meeting that I had mentioned with Kevin O'Rourke of Shasta College, I, I just was delightfully surprised to learn that really the reason he wanted to sit down and have lunch wasn't so much to talk about bond funds. He wanted to talk about North State Together and the opportunity and what. So I was really glad that I had invited Supervisor Lutwiler to join us for that. Because it, I just didn't realize. This, these surf funds that we, you've been hearing us talk about, the California Economic Resiliency Fund. We had, I know all these acronyms, they just get so messy. But what might spark the connection is that this was $5 million in planning funds for our region and a subsequent $600 million to the state generally. Now, one little caveat, I guess I would say, is that in speaking with Senator McGuire as he was up for the gala, I learned that those dollars are on the table and it depends on the state budget, whether those dollars get approved or not. Or maybe I learned that from Kevin O'Rourke, but probably doesn't make any difference. They're not certain and I, I just thought that they were. But what's awesome is that in all of our efforts to connect with Jason Schwenkler and not always hearing back timely. And then when we hear back, I don't necessarily feel like all my questions get answered in their entirety. And Kevin, as the North State Together CEO sits on that board of decision. And I was, I had a chuckle when he said, if I could earn your trust, we would really like to advocate for Trinity County if we could. Oh, please. So that's really awesome to have that connection. He's just terrific. We had an awesome conversation. Supervisor Lutwiler shared the matrix that he's been creating as we've been working with the different entities over the months. And when Kevin looked at even just one box and glanced down the, I think, five items inside that one box, he said, I can tell you right now, every single one of those proposals would be a perfect fit for this funding. He also said, we can help you with your project proposal preparation and I can find dollars through Shasta College to fund that preparation for you. And I can also tell you, like, with 99.9% certainty, your project will get approved because that's how good we are. Well, this was a nice lunch. So that's a really, a really fun update. The other one I wanted to share with you is, I, I don't want to talk about this last week, last board meeting because I wanted to wait till we had this conversation with our T O T partners. But prior to that meeting, I reached out to John Driscoll to find out if Congressman Huffman might be in support of finding some financing for us to help us purchase a building that would serve as kind of the hub of our chamber visitor center. However, this kind of comes together. And as I shared kind of where we've been, where we are, where I think we may be going. His comment to me was, wow, I'm so on board with this. I'm super excited about this project, but the one caveat is I want to know if there's unity between your groups. He said, if there's no unity, the deal's off. Okay. So I went to the group and not, I didn't even have to push unity. There was unity in the room before I even walked in. It was just the coolest meeting and, you know, we don't know what our way forward is going to be. There's a second meeting scheduled, but, but it's just so good. And so it was really fun to email him first thing the next morning and, and just really share with him what a beautiful group of people this is and what their aspirations are and what they see for this county going forward. And so, and we can just keep him in our thoughts and prayers. He's out there hunting down money for us. I hope he's successful, but that was fun. And that's the end of my report.
Great.
You have no, nothing for the ad hoc, all right. All right, moving on then to our last ad hoc, California Home Insurance.
Thank you. I, I think, Rick, you may have found out some things at your CSAC meeting, but I just, I've made it, spent last week making several phone calls with different organizations that provide insurance and have another meeting scheduled for next week. I wanted to have a letter prepared for this week, but it, once I started looking into this, the astronomical increases, not only to private homes, but to businesses. And as I mentioned earlier, our volunteer fire departments is crippling. And the, the number of people who have come forward since I said that I was interested in that to share their calamity stories is, is really quite overwhelming for our region. I also spent some times talking at length with several regiters in our areas and they expressed the loss of sales due to insurance being able to be found for those properties. And then also the demands on the seller to make those houses ready for the potential for insurance. It's, we kind of have a, it's a Goliath for sure. And I've, will continue to look into it throughout this next week with hopes for a letter that Supervisor Lutwiler and I will put together and ask the board to send to our state commissioner regarding our concerns for our communities. Thank you.
And the only thing I'll add, I, at CSAC, as Heidi mentioned, we, I had the opportunity to reach out to folks there. So their representatives at CSAC were going to get back to me with some additional resources or assistance. They might be able to help us use in that letter and our campaign, if you will. And also the, I think deputy or interim, I can't remember, but the fire marshal from Cal Fire for the state was there. And he mentioned that there have been communities who have had enough input of factual data to correct their maps. And, and so areas that had been designated one way could be changed to another way. And so I reached out to say, I feel like we need a do-over because we got very little notice before the public meeting. The window is only so long, and so I don't think we got a lot of input. And I checked with some people that would have definitely been providing input. And so I'm going to continue following up on that to see if we can basically get a second opportunity to review those maps. And, and what that would mean is we can't just say we wish it was different, but we can go in and say, you have old data or incorrect data or missing data that should be reflected in those maps. And, and they make the point that their maps are not the insurance company's maps, but they look at a lot of the same things and you kind of have to wonder if insurance companies aren't looking at their maps. So we just want to make sure that we have the best chance to make sure our county is well represented and accurately represented in that situation.
Yeah, and, and I would add in a, maybe hesitate to add because I don't remember the source off the top of my head, but I was at that first public meeting and those Cal Fire representatives assured me that those mapping outcomes wouldn't affect our insurance rates. So I just sort of took a deep breath and said, oh, good, only later to learn for this year. But the, the suspicion is that in years to come, they absolutely will affect. And so I, I really appreciate your efforts to try to find a do-over for that. And, um, thank you. All right, it is 12 o'clock and we're going to take a 30 minute lunch break and we'll come back at 12:30. All right, it is 12 o'clock and we're going to take a 30 minute lunch break and we'll come back at 12:30.
My name is Kyle DeGiulio, I'm a resident of District Two. I was just gonna request that item 3.2 be pulled from the consent calendar. I don't think it's ready for your approval.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? He's seen none, any on Zoom?
I have no raised, oh. No raised hand, no chats.
All right, that we will close public comment, bring it back to the board, more members who have items you wish to pull. Are there any items that you wish to pull from the consent calendar?
I will pull 3.2.
All right, any others? No, he can pull anything he wants. Okay.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Supervisor Fraser, second by Supervisor Lute Weiler to approve the consent calendar minus item 3.2. Supervisor Lute Weiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
All right, item 3.2 authorize the chairman to sign letters of support regarding water storage and water requirements, no fiscal impact, Supervisor Gogan.
We will be bringing back item 3.2 on the May second meeting in between the county and the Fish and Game Advisory Commission will be relooking revising the letter that we had previous for clarity. Bringing it back on the second of May to be turned in before the fifth of May.
So that would be your motion as far as pulling the item?
I will second that.
All right, so open public comment on this item, any public comment in the room? And any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, no chats.
Right, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board. I did that backward.
That's all right, we already have a motion, but.
So motion by Supervisor Gogan, second by Supervisor Carpenter Harris to pull this item from the agenda today and bring it back on May 2nd. Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Lute Weiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Moving on to county matters, these items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board staff or public may request that an item be heard out of order. Item 4.1, adopt a resolution which designates the Director of Environmental Health, Kristaline Anderson, to be designated to approve fire plans for cannabis manufacturing. And that a future building official and/or local fire district fire chief with the appropriate qualifications and certifications may approve fire plans as needed, no fiscal impact. Cannabis Division Director Pobani.
Good afternoon, Board. So the Chapter 1743F, the cannabis manufacturing ordinance, since the time of adoption has had a lingering piece that has needed to be remedied, which is appointing the fire plan reviewer. My understanding is that the Weaverville Fire Chief hasn't had any interest in pursuing, you know, working on this item. And so we've gone back and forth with building department staff initially to, you know, in conversation with Jim Santiago to find out if he was willing to do this fire plan review for cannabis manufacturing operations. And ultimately what we landed on was that there were a particular set of certifications required to do this review. And so Christie has been kind enough to volunteer to get these certifications and perform this on behalf of the county. So I don't know if there's any questions or I could give a little bit more sort of background, if that would be helpful.
So Drew, did the, the fire marshal from District Two not have the certifications at the time or the want?
My understanding, and I don't want to speak on his behalf because I haven't had any in-person conversations with him about this, but my understanding is that perhaps not the want. And as well as the certifications possibly.
So I don't, I guess I don't want you to speak for him, but the want means you just perhaps didn't feel like doing it?
Well, and I think some of the prior conversations we've had in this is also he's, his jurisdiction is Weaverville. And these are not necessarily going to be in Weaverville. I mean, it, why would the Weaverville Fire Chief be signing off on something that's happening in Ketten Palm?
And I can give a little historical background on that. And when this ordinance was originally coming together, the Fire Chiefs Association Group put together a letter requesting that this provision come in here. Obviously with a great concern about using large gas tanks and explosions and all that. So they made a request to have it signed off by the Fire Chiefs. My understanding was, was that the county at the time said, okay, would you like to have each of your Fire Chiefs sign off based on their jurisdiction? They made the determination that no, we wanted to have one individual represent all of us because of the qualifications and requirements. And so they either elected him or voluntold him that he would be the one doing it. And so that's how it ended up in the, the way it was structured in the ordinance and the way it was structured in use.
And then I'd like to just sort of provide my, my own understanding for clarification potentially, which is that the way the ordinance is constructed is it just simply makes reference to an approved fire plan reviewer. But looking into sort of what exactly needs to be reviewed and, and sort of the, the details of the process, what I have determined is that essentially there's two subsets to the application requirements that we would want to have in place. One is that they have a engineered stamped sprinkler system specific to their manufacturing operations. And then as well, a fire and life safety plan. And so I've had a number of conversations with Chief Warshower about this since I'm on the Hayfork Volunteer Fire Department as well. And I think it's really important that all of the chiefs and the districts where there are going to be these manufacturing operations, that the fire and life safety plan obviously should be reviewed and that information should be available to each of the districts that have these types of manufacturing operations within them just for, you know, safety for first responders if nothing else. And so initially going back and forth with building, the other alternative would have been to do an RFP or RFQ to find a third party, you know, consultant essentially to do this review for us. And so I think internally in discussions with interim Deputy Director Presley and myself, we determined that it's certainly from a fiscal standpoint, more efficient to have county staff do it. So we appreciate Christie volunteering. And then the reason that we decided to sort of put in the second, be it further resolved, was just to sort of open up the potential, depending on who was hired as the new building official, if they already had these certifications, that we wouldn't have to come back to the board to have this resolution done again. And then sort of similar, Chief Warshower expressed to me that he'd be more than happy to get these certifications and, and do this type of review. But I think as it stands now, you know, we're content with, with Christie being the, the first choice for now, so.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to ask, and maybe it's more for Chrissy, but just to understand the timing of both when will be certifications, whatever has to happen will be completed. And then what kind of response time with all the other duties she'll be able to respond? Because I know there's a lot on the plate.
So I just wanted to clarify that we had already been reviewing these plans as they were coming in and already commenting on the hazmat aspects, the fire code aspects. We don't have a fire marshal, so us in building pretty much absorb that, those duties. I thought this was of, to make things more quickly processed, but also to make sure certain items are checked off. Many calculations required for fire code and plans are, are vector level calculus, you know. Also, we're also worried about the hazmat aspect, things that shouldn't mix together, mixing together. So the chemistry background is also pretty important. We, we already make these comments, we already do these things, but to make it official, we're gonna say, hey, well, we'll do this for you guys. And in the interest of, you know, keeping businesses going and getting permitted, I think it's a good choice. We do plan on being certified, well, I plan on being certified by July 10th. The current lead building person is also gonna take the same training. I'm sorry, Chrissy, who, who else? Cody Smith. Oh, okay. He's also gonna take the same training for redundancy purposes. And that way, if there is a fire or some kind of emergency, there is someone with the train and knowledge. However, he does consult with us often, so I don't feel like certain things would get overlooked. Like the chemical portions and certain calculations. We do review engineered plans regularly. And we do challenge them when we see mistakes, so we're pretty familiar with that process. In addition, I think by July 10th, we'll be ready to start plan checking and feel really good about that as the fire plans examiner. And this is gonna be a certification through Cal Fire Office of Marshall, Fire Marshall. So until the, the code actually gets changed, this is kind of a Band-Aid, but it sounds like it was designated to the Weaverville Fire Chief. And I did speak to Todd Corbett and Todd explained his concern with representing the whole county, but also meeting certain qualifications. So.
And so you are, you, we'll have to wait until you get the certification for you to be able to sign off on these and your sign up. Anybody sign up will have to be the deciding factor before one of these can go forward. Is that correct?
So if there's a change in language, which I did discuss with council before meeting today, be it further resolved that the building official and/or local district fire chief, so I just until we get everything laid in stone, would like to remove the local district fire chief, not because I don't like local district fire chiefs. I very much like Leroy, I've worked with him a lot. It's just until we get some clarification on what exactly we need. And, and part of that is that, is that certification for plans exam, the fire plan examiner.
And then where will the designation be that the local fire district does need to be apprised of this? Where is that located?
So just to explain a little bit, we have a California emergency response system that all hazardous waste, hazardous materials has to be indexed in and all emergency responders have access to that. However, I very much encourage every fire district to walk every industrial manufacturing or stores anywhere in, in their district to kind of take a look at what the dangers would be when they respond. Did you want to add to that at all, Drew?
I, I just want to add that to my knowledge for, and I'm not entirely certain of, of this process, but my understanding is that for any sort of commercial operation, that fire and life safety plan, I guess, once approved, goes to the local district fire chief for their review. And I believe at least the one instance that I know of, where Chief Warshower and Chief Corbett went out to a site in Hayfork that was unrelated to cannabis or manufacturing, it's actually to a county-owned property, that that fire and life safety plan was routed to them prior so that they could go and do the inspection. So that's all I have to add.
So is it a formal sign up? It has to be, it's, it's a yes, no, pass, go, or is it just something we do?
Oh, we could leave the and local district fire chief, just to make sure that that is kept in line.
Even though it's not clearly stated in the ordinance, I think that we can, and Margaret, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we could just establish these application requirements as policy. It doesn't need to be clearly stated that we, we have both the stamped engineered plans for the sprinklers as a requirement for the application. And then as well as the fire and life safety plan.
So when, okay, there's two things. First of all, Chrissy, taking or leaving it in the ordinance as it is seems problematic to me because to me it reads then as though one of those individuals could actually sign off on the plan, which doesn't seem to make sense, but I guess it does say that we have to be certified. Nevertheless, it kind of liked your cleaned up suggestion of the language initially.
Yeah, and that's the only thing, when it says or local district fire chief, if we could take out that or I think that would clean that up to say and, and that would make sure that the local fire also takes a look at the plans.
Jill, just for clarification, are you referring to cleaning up this resolution? Or are you talking about something that we should consider as it relates to ordinance revision process?
I was thinking of the resolution, but I was kind of asking further and not realizing that it might land on an ordinance. But hoping that it was gonna somehow be a requirement that could be written somewhere that they need to do that. In other words, I would not like to see this accidentally skipped. And maybe it's something that Rick interfaces, sorry Supervisor Lute Weiler interfaces with the Fire Chiefs regarding. I just don't want to see an emergency happen sometime and we've got a firefighter in there and they weren't aware. I just don't want to see an emergency happen sometime and we've got a firefighter in there and they weren't aware of what the dangers might be.
If I might, with Margaret, I, I'm just guessing that we can't direct the volunteer fire departments to do something, but we can make it a requirement that we present them with the opportunity. Is, is that accurate?
Correct. We, we don't have the jurisdiction to require them to, which is why the ordinance has the option of having an in-house reviewer as well, which is what we're exploring. But we, yes, we can make it an internal policy or even an internal regulation that we give them notice. That would be within the board's jurisdiction.
So it would sound to me like we, our wording might be that we are designating for now Christie and eventually we could do Cody as well, it sounds like, to be designated to approve the fire plans. And, oh, and I see, and a future building official already in there. Okay. But then, and then kind of like stop and then say, volunteer or local dis fire, fire district fire chiefs will be notified in advance of approvals for, so that they can visit if they choose or something, some kind of wording like that. So it's like, they're two different things. We're, we're assigning one or the other of Christie or Cody, basically to go inspect and approve officially. And then we're formally making it a part of our policy, process and policy that we notify the fire chiefs so they have the opportunity to also visit before we finalize. Does that sound right?
Getting this specific, I'm gonna ask you if that's a motion.
Well, I'm thinking that maybe we should wait on that and we're, cause we are getting a lot into discussion and we haven't had public comment.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that that ordinance needs to be cleaned up anyways, cause it designates Weaverville Fire Chief. So the cleanup needs to happen. It's just, how do we fix it right now? Right, sorry.
Perfect. Okay, let's, you got one more thing?
Just one more thing that I want to clarify. My opinion, I guess, would be that, so whoever the board designates as the fire plan reviewer, there'd be a sort of two pieces of information, or two documents that they would be reviewing and signing off on. The first is the, the sprinkler design essentially, and the second is the fire and life safety plan. My thinking is that at the time that there's going to be a site inspection for that fire life safety plan, that there's coordination between whoever county staff is and the local district fire chief, so that they can all go together and have Christie's expertise onsite in terms of how she did the calculations and, and, you know, approved that fire suppression plan and the fire and life safety plan. So that we wouldn't just approve it and give it to them and say, do whatever you guys want to do with this. But we would actually make a concerted effort to have them coordinate with staff so that it's all done at once. And any questions can be answered, you know, at the site at that time. Thank you.
And, and just one question I don't think I got clear answer on is, I'm, I'm assuming by what you've described that we need a certified person to do this. So these plans can't move forward until we have somebody certified to do it. We're hearing July 10th is what we're hoping for with that certification. So any manufacturing application is at least to that extent on hold until after we have somebody certified to review.
And they all have been on hold because of this issue.
Right.
One other thing to point out is that the ones that we have pending are for non-volatile manufacturing. So they aren't the ones that, you know, have explosives or flammable elements. They're mostly all mechanical extraction processes. And I can explain more about that if you would like to hear.
Thank you. I just want to be clear on that people have the right expectations.
We have an exception in non-volatile ethanol extraction, which is flammable and explosive and highly mixable with the air. So ethanol is still really important. So I just want to touch base.
So when I, when I say that these are for non-volatile, they are not ones that include ethanol. They're, they're mechanical extraction processes.
Okay.
Require the certified sign off. Thank you. Okay.
Do I dare ask for further questions?
Very much.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna open to public comment. Any in the room, any on Zoom? Keith?
Yeah, thanks again Chair and, and Board. I have two comments. Is when the ordinance was written, the fire chiefs wanted nothing to do with individually looking at them by district. They wanted one, one overall professional to look at it. Now, maybe they've changed, but I know of two fire departments that actually have policies that they don't interfere in any government regulations pertaining to this. Secondly, this would be a question for Christie. Since the Trinity Counties refused to do COOPA, which is the hazardous material, and this is a requirement in our ordinance, I kind of wonder what authority that you have to oversee hazardous materials since the county refuses to take that role. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I address that question?
Sure.
Okay, we are in the application process for the COOPA program with all six programs pending right now. We've been working with Cal EPA, so I'm, I'm confused on what Mr. Groves has explained as we move forward for approval last year for application process while he was still on the board. So.
And I don't know if I can do this. Can I ask Mr. Groves a question since he didn't use his three minutes?
It's your pleasure, it's the chair.
Oh, and I would like to know, Keith, if that answers your question.
Well, we are still under state control of COOPA and I appreciate the county trying to move forward in that. I spent my thousand dollars with the state COOPA. If that was a mistake, I'd love to know. But, but for my business, Christie doesn't have oversight to come in and look at my hazardous materials. COOPA does, and they do, they annually inspect me. So that, that's my, so no, I don't think the question was answered to my understanding, but that's all.
Okay.
So this is a 12-month transition process from the state to hand over all the permits, all of the programs over to Trinity County. And it's my understanding by the end of the fiscal year that will be handed over and the transition process will start. So yeah, I'm not quite sure how else to answer that, but we do regularly review SERs and do respond to emergency. We are the IC for all hazmat response in Trinity County. So I think that, that wraps it up. That's why we always comment on it.
Chrissy, what, just one thing, what is COOPA?
California Unified Program Agency. A very long way to say, six regulatory programs that regulate hazardous materials and hazardous waste.
I have no other raised hands, no other chance. So Christie, is it your understanding then that at the end of this six-month transition, you would be the person who would then inspect a facility like Mr. Groves owns? And he wouldn't be seeing the state anymore, he would be seeing you?
So they expect the transition to take 12 months. Certain programs are easier to transition over, like hazardous materials business plans, which all, all the facilities are in that category. It's a little easier to transition those over. They expect up to 12 months.
And when you said fiscal year, is that in this June with our fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And they've actually are more than happy to help us receive that program. They've been working with us hand in hand. So.
Okay. Good to know. All right. Thank you. All right. So would somebody care to make a motion? Oh, and sorry, with that, there are no more raised hands and we are closing public comment. Man, off my game today.
Okay, so I welcome assistance to make sure we get this worded in the way that is going to serve our needs best. Adopt a resolution which designates Director Environmental Health to be designated to approve fire plans for cannabis manufacturing and that a future building official with the appropriate qualifications certifications may approve fire plans as needed. And then separate sentence, local fire district fire chiefs will be notified or invited to participate in inspection as part of the application review process. That work?
I'll second for discussion purposes. Question I would have is, why do we want to limit the scope? Because the way this is written is we would be allowing for these plans to be signed off also by a local fire chief if they also have the required qualifications. So the issue we've had in the past is there was no one to do it. So if, if we have more people that are qualified and it's already written in that we can use them, I don't have a problem with that either, because then if Christie gets mad and quits or somebody doesn't get the certificate, the qualifications, all the certificates at the building department, we could still possibly have someone as a fallback. So I don't have a problem with, I think it's a great idea to engage with the volunteer fire departments and to give them the life safety plans and stuff. Ask for comment. But I don't know why we would exclude them from possibly being used as a plan checker too.
And I'm guessing, I'm gathering this is in part just to make it clear that we are taking action to get someone in place to do this so that people understand this process has been held up for a long time, but here's our plan. We're gonna make this happen. And then Dan, your, your point it sounds like is, but if we're too exclusive in the language, it binds us in and we have to come back and change it when we need somebody else.
And it, I believe our ordinance says names the Weaverville Fire Chief or the designee of the board. And that's what we're doing now is having some designees. So my question is why limit it to only to when we, the proposal was for, to allow a fire chief, if they want to go out and get that certification, to be able to sign off on these plans. I, I don't have a problem with that. As long as they are qualified, then why limit it?
So I just, I just want to add something on your last second, sorry, last sentence there, Rick. You said to apprise or inform the volunteer fire chief that we're gonna have an inspection on X date. Are we requiring him to be there or just apprise him of it?
We, we can't require him to be there.
Good enough.
Okay. Would you be more comfortable with the original language including them? And then have that separate sentence on the end that was inviting local fire chiefs?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not sure if we need to add that language to the end, or if that can be just part of Drew's work. And I'm looking at county council now. Do we need to require that? Or is that something that we can capture by June in our ordinance amendments? Is this?
That's your pleasure. If you want to capture it in the June ordinance, the way the ordinance is written, we only have one designee, which is the Weaverville Fire Chief plus anyone else the board decides. So if you are looking to open it up to allow any fire chief who has the criteria, you would need to actually specify that in your, in your resolution.
Which this does.
Correct.
But what I'm.
As amended.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, do we need to add that last sentence? Or is that something that Drew can add on his own where he's going to send these out to the volunteer fire chiefs? Do we need to put that in the ordinance or are we just gonna allow that to be an internal department standard?
That can be done by any of the three mechanisms. It can be done by policy, resolution or ordinance. It's the board's pleasure.
So with that, I think I would make a second motion to adopt item 4.1 as presented.
And just, I'll second that motion for discussion.
Okay.
So basically you're just saying leave it to the division to have that as a policy that they engage the local fire departments, but not make it a part of a resolution here at this point.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
You're leaving the broader language, which includes fire chiefs who might have the appropriate qualification certifications, not binding this up. Okay.
Kind of liked the added language to be in the resolution. And if it matches the ordinance as you revise it, it, it's important to me that the volunteers are definitely invited to that site inspection or their safety at some point that an emergency is being dealt with. So, yeah, or you can, I would invite you to amend it if you choose to. If not, I'll make a third motion. Or you can convince me why that's not necessary. I'm open.
I think that we should be able to trust our department head, our division directors to do what's the right thing, which would be to engage in that. Also, there's, those notifications are undoubtedly going out as part of the, and Drew's standing up to.
I just wanted to clarify that, you know, in the current construct of, of how projects are approved, these projects would all get routed for like a 30-day RFC for comments to the local district fire chief and all the other agencies for comments. So there's already a mechanism built into this process where we would notify them. So that's not something that's like lacking per se. And then I want to give Christie the opportunity to make some comments, cause she has some concerns that I think are valid.
So my concern might be best for council, I'm not sure. So what if this routing, routing, if it was left as is a resolution and it was routed to myself, building and the fire departments and we had a disagreement on whether it should move forward?
So the way that is written, we would only need one signature. So in, in any individual person who qualified to could use their qualifications to sign off on it and the others would not have a say in it. Again, I know that's not how it works. I know it's a community live discussion where everyone's trying to figure out the best solution. But ultimately, if you felt it was appropriate to sign off, you could sign off on it and it would be a valid signature.
But I guess the same thing, if, if Chrissy didn't want to sign off on it, but somebody else did, as long as you have one signature that says it's okay, it's okay.
That is correct. Yes, exactly. It would, it would be their, their liability, but it would still allow it to move forward. So yes, if you have multiple points of signature, each signature has the equal and, and valid authority.
But the only signatures that would be for consideration are those that have completed this program.
Yes.
Which still doesn't mean there might not be disagreement.
And that's the point I was gonna bring up is say I checked the engineering plans, which happens a lot and had a disagreement with the engineer. So they want to move forward. Would being told no, no by mom, send them to dad is, is my concern with that. So.
Do you have a suggestion to remedy?
Just what I had initially suggested is to leave the or part on the local volunteer fire just because, and we can revisit that. It's up to you. But I just feel like we review plans so regularly that we find a lot of issues inside this building and we resolve those issues, but maybe, you know, it, things, in the past, I've seen things get routed to local fire departments and then just get kind of pushed through in these situations before some of this has been cleaned up. So.
But I guess to the Chair's comment though, the only way that would mean anything in this situation would be if that individual who was quote passing it through had gone through the certification process. Cause otherwise their vote doesn't count.
Correct.
So you still have the concern?
I, I do, just because I think there's a lot of calculations and stuff we do that may not be able to be done by the volunteer fire. Not, again, not picking on volunteer fire departments. I'm just concerned. What if, what if one says yes, one of?
So you are saying, if I understand you correctly, you have a level of education and expertise that goes beyond this certification of training and that anybody else that just went to get this particular certification doesn't have the added component that you already bring to the table?
Um, correct.
Okay.
Okay, I'm back to county council question. So it would seem to me that if anybody passes the certification, they have the qualifications to rule on this particular thing that we're discussing. I also gather that there are other aspects through this routing. through this routing that are getting signed off on. So I might get certified and sign off on one of these. But environmental health could still weigh in and say, well, one, I disagree with your ruling, but also I have these other concerns. So would that not address your concern still? Because I'm still trying to, I'm trying to get to the point of if we all have the same certification, we all have the same training to sign off on this thing, this particular thing we're talking about. Why should we not trust that certification versus other things that, to your point, might, you might have a greater awareness of concerns that should be addressed?
Um, I could understand your point. If, as long as there's a mechanism where we can comment and those comments are, I guess, stand up, even if somebody does sign off on it. I know that, you know, with the building department, they have to look at fire sprinkler plans and things like that regularly. So I guess I'm just, I'm not trying to make things more difficult. I'm just trying to make sure that if I have a concern that it's addressed.
And is there no other point in this sign-off process that your concerns, just as environmental compliance outside of this training and sign off for these two items are heard kind of on a separate level? Or not so much?
I, I had thought of a couple of different scenarios in my mind, I guess. I'm always trying to be like the advocate for what the arguments could be. And I guess just calculating based on what's there and what can mix and, and things that shouldn't be combined. But I guess if, you know, everybody has to do fire plan checking and has to review the sprinkler plans. The sprinkler plans would still go through building, correct? So maybe it's a non-issue.
Yeah, and I, the way I understand Drew's presentation on this is we're going to have any manufacturing facility is going to have an engineered set of sprinkler plans, which that should be, there could be an issue there, but generally that's signed by an engineer stamped. All right, so then there's the fire life and safety aspect, which is more of the, your evacuation routes, your, how you're going to respond, all this stuff. That's where the fire departments would be more involved. And I, there's going to be aspects that a fire chief is more qualified to look at than Christie is. And there's going to be aspects that Christie's more qualified to look at than a fire chief. But what we're looking at is right now, there's no way for someone to get these plans signed. It's impossible to have manufacturing in Trinity County because we don't have someone to sign these plans. So if we have someone that's certified to sign the plans, I say, let's let them sign the plans. And whether it be cannabis or any other business, I think that the more options we have, the better off we are, because we have seen, I haven't been on this board that long, and we've had a lot of turnover and a lot of issues just come up where it's like, oh, well, we can't do this this way anymore. Let's, uh, the more levels of redundancy we can have, the better off we are, in my opinion.
And I think Dan has expressed, you know, well, sort of my intent behind trying to have this, you know, encompasses many potential people that have the certification. I think it might be important for you all to know that in the conversations I've had with Chief Wershauer, he expressed that, you know, he would be willing to do this, however, the county would have to pay for him to get the certifications. So practically, you know, in, in the very short term, I see it as a, as a non-issue. And certainly if at, at some future point where we had multiple certified fire plan reviewers, I'm sure we could bring it back to the board for you to, you know, consolidate that once the, the current issue had been remedied, which is having no one.
And really Supervisor Fraser's point on turnover in staff was not to back up to my question two questions ago to do with, I would feel comfortable if we put it in the resolution as well, that we're inviting the fire departments at that point of sign off to attend that site inspection was certainly not any indication that I thought you wouldn't do your job the way you're supposed to, um, at all. Um, but that I like that redundancy to make sure that that is very clear. What if we have new folks here? What if we have new fire chiefs that don't realize and we miss some opportunity? Just, I appreciated the redundancy of the way that had been stated in your motions.
And I don't have a problem with, with that invitation to and if we want to put that in the resolution, I'm fine with that too. And I don't know if I could amend my motion to cover that, but just to say that I wouldn't, let's see, do you have that sentence handy? Yeah.
Or he could, he could amend his motion for the first part to be like yours and your move. Either way, there's just one piece missing from each.
Yeah, the last sentence was something effective that, that local fire district fire chiefs would be invited to participate in the application review process.
Well, I would, I would amend my motion to say that local district fire chiefs will be invited to participate in onsite inspection of the facilities with the county personnel.
So I think there's sort of two distinct elements that are sort of intertwined right now. One is in terms of the approvals process for the project. And then something that I'd like to suggest that we look into with ad hoc is that as a requirement for prior to commencing operations of an approved project, that we incorporate some language into the ordinance itself that states that there will be a, a final inspection, which is then I think the place where we could coordinate between county staff and the local fire chiefs.
Yeah, that sounds great. That sounds great.
That's on the road.
And I don't want to get it caught into, I don't want us to get caught up where we are held up by participation of the local fire chiefs because we can't require them to do anything. So I don't, if we can't require it, then we can't be held up by it. But definitely want to make sure that we are making that available to them as part of the process so that they do have the opportunity to raise concerns. So Dan, you want, are you making?
I'll, I'll
Sorry.
Would amend my motion to state that they'll be invited to participate in onsite inspection with county staff, the local district fire chief.
I'll second that amendment.
All right. Anybody who care to make a competing motion? Space available. All right. So Supervisor, motion by Supervisor Fraser, second by Supervisor Luke Wiler. Supervisor Luke Wiler.
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Chairman Cox.
Aye. All right, that motion passes unanimously. Nice. Thank you both.
Thank you, yes.
Thanks, you guys.
Item 4.2 pursuant to Trinity Code Section 2.60.410, authorize hiring candidate number 39683927 as a housing case manager at range G197 step D in the Grants Division, Housing Department, effective April 18th, 2023. Approximate cost and salary and benefits per month for a housing case manager at A step is $6,490.29 and at D step is $7,367.23. Do we have Lacy or Suzie online or are you handling this for HR?
I will be handling this for HR.
All right, thank you.
Um, we have been able to add two positions to the housing division and the recruitments have been difficult to fill, and they have received actually two applicants recently. One was approved earlier on the consent calendar. Asking for a, a step D is not routine, but we believe that this candidate has the experience and the skills and to be competitively paid at this range to bring them on board for our county. So I would recommend that this be approved.
All right, thank you. Any questions, board members? All right, we'll open the item for public comment. None in the room? Is there any on Zoom? I have no raised hands, no chats. All right, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board, entertain a motion.
I move to approve as presented.
I will second.
All right, so motion by Supervisor Luke Wiler, second by Supervisor Gogan. Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Luke Wiler.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser.
Aye.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 4.3, approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2223 for jail health, Department 2285. Increasing transfers in and services and supplies by $130,000. Approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2023, 2223 for contributions to others, Department 1990. Increasing transfers out by $130,000 and approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2223 for contingency, Department 9901, decreasing appropriations by $130,000. Increase in general fund appropriations in the amount of $130,000. Current contingency balance is $365,050. And refer this to Jill Lynn or Christine Gaffney. I'm not sure who's taking the item. I actually have Mary on the line. Mary.
Hello, Madam Chair, and members of the board. It's Mayor Treese, the Business Manager from the Trinity County Sheriff's Office. Here to submit this item to the board for review today. Our jail health budget has experienced some pretty catastrophic fees this fiscal year. We do have catastrophic medical insurance that helps cover these costs, but we have to pay for them upfront and then submit for reimbursement through catastrophic medical insurance. Each claim is subject to a $10,000 premium that has to be paid, and then we can be reimbursed for anything in the claim above the $10,000 mark. So I'm happy to take any of your questions.
I'm curious where reimbursements then go once received.
So they go back into the, they go back into the department revenue once they're received. And then, of course, at the end of the fiscal year, if, you know, if those revenues and expenses come in under budget, then they're reabsorbed back into general fund.
When they return to the department as a part of your departmental revenue, are they then available for expenditure in other areas?
Only, only by board review and approval.
And that, if that were to be the situation, would we be told what their original source was?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mary, is that 10,000 you spoke of a deductible?
It is a deductible and it's per inmate claim.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Questions of board members? All right, we'll open this item for public comment. There is none in the room. Is there any on Zoom? I have no raised hands, no chats. All right, thank you. With that, we will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Any care to make a motion?
Uh, move to approve as presented.
Thank you, I will second. Motion by Supervisor Luke Wiler, second by myself. Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Supervisor Luke Wiler.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser. All right, that motion passes unanimously. That will move into closed session. Item 5.1, Government Code Section 54954.5C, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Number of Cases, One, Goon et Al versus Trinity, County of Trinity et Al, U.S. District Court, Eastern District of California, Case Number Two, colon, 13 dash CB dash 00452 dash TLN dash CMK. And today we will have as an emergency item, item number 5.2, and I would defer to council for language.
The closed session item is an urgency item, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Initiation pursuant to 54956.9C, Number of Potential Cases, One.
I apologize, I did see that now in my email. She did her job and I didn't look at my messages. All right. All right, any public comment on closed session? There's none in the room? Is there any on Zoom? I have no raised hands, no chats. All right, with that, we will end our open session for